Hello, everybody. I thank you for being here already an hour, nearly an hour late. So I appreciate your patience in the open session starting and it's noted and not planned. At the start of this open sessions, we just, this meeting is resuming from executive session downstairs below where we started at 5:00 PM. And we're actually going to declare an emergency and we are going to state the reason for that emergency. And we're actually going to modify the current agenda and we're going to add an agenda item. Hopefully Attorney McComer will walk us through the process to legally do that and what we need to say.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, to amend an agenda after the meeting has begun, which is happening right now, the, there has to be a statement for a good faith reason for the amendment and why it wasn't included in the original agenda. And the good faith reason why this was not included in the original agenda was because it was information that the board just heard a few minutes ago, an executive session for the first time. And so this is an emergency because the board may take action on this agenda item. And the emergency is defined in Title 74204 subsection two, may cause immediate financial loss if it's not addressed right away. In this case, I think it also threatens the existence of another lawsuit impinging on accreditation. So that is certainly an emergency. The agenda would be to add an action item at the end of the information items on page two after the new website launch. And the, the action item is on a personnel matter. I understand there is one motion to address that urgent personnel matter. And so there has to be a motion by someone to so amend the agenda.
If there is that motion, will someone please say so moved?
I'll say so moved.
Trustee Banducci makes the motion to amend the meeting and
I'll second.
With the stated reason that Attorney McComer just read declaring the emergency and it's seconded by trustee Wagner. And I hope that did it right this time. Is there any discussion? I don't think we really need any discussion. Is there anything else we need to do according to the laws?
Vote on the motion.
Deep breath, triple check, cross it, dyes and t's.
It's fine.
All right. Let's get this right this time. So all those in favor of adopting the amended motion trustee Zimmerman.
Are you going to state what the act, what the item is going to be on the amended agenda?
We did. It's titled a personnel matter.
Well, I think Attorney McComer stated it, but I think I'd like to hear you read actually what we're going to vote on.
Sure.
Thank you.
Could you read it for me?
Well, the, the action item would be if the board decides to take action, there would be an action item on a personnel matter of an urgent nature. And the motion would be to address that personnel matter.
So the agenda item is what we're trying to read to, and I think I have it written. Thank you for this opportunity to clarify trustees. I, I think, I think that action item is, or the, the agenda action item is just called personnel matter. Address urgent personnel matter. Is that what we're calling it?
Yes.
Again, personnel matter, just comma, address urgent personnel matter is what we're calling it. Thank you, trustee Zimmerman for that clarification. Calling for the vote to approve this modified agenda and to modify the agenda mid-meeting as according to the declared emergency and according to the laws of Idaho.
Take a roll call.
Wagner.
Yeah, I think at least it'd be safer to take a roll call vote, just in case there's an fire.
Yeah, I noticed that that was actually documented to say that way, but I don't believe that's required, but we shall do it that way.
It's not required by the law, but I think this board should go above the law.
We shall do that. Trustee Corkle, will you please lead us into the voting?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Zimmerman, will you please?
Aye.
Okay, trustee Banducci.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have a five oh vote. The agenda is modified and adopted. Okay, thank you, everyone. Welcome. We're convening call to order. If you would please stand so we can say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Debbie D. Thomas, if you'd please come to the microphone.
There you are. Yes.
Good evening. Chair McKenzie, members of the board, President Swain, students, staff, faculty, administration, both and community members here and via Zoom. I'm Debbie D. Thomas and my ACCT co-consultant Ken Burke and I have been working with the Board of Trustees and President Swain to resolve some of the board governance accreditation issues that were identified through that process. Ken and I have both given pretty extensive updates at previous board meetings. So tonight mine's going to be rather brief. We met again last night for a training. Four of the five trustees were there. And the fifth who could not be there, we collected the handouts so that we could ensure that that trustee also had all of the information. At this session, we concentrated on three topics. The first was the process for the approval of the president's goals, which are on the agenda tonight. Having mutually agreed upon goals is not only a commonly accepted best practice for a president at a community college. It's also a requirement of your board policy 2.0202. So it is a very important step for the board and the president to take together in the governance of this college. The second thing that we did was review several components of board, of board goals, which is also a commonly accepted best practice. It's called board priorities or board goals depending on the community college that you're talking about. And in doing this, we looked at several things that we have talked about in depth at previous board meetings, such as roles and responsibilities of community college trustees, best practices of boards of community colleges, a model code of ethics for trustees. And we looked at the board's self-evaluation that they had done at a previous meeting, which identified some areas where they thought they had room for improvement. This led to the third focus area was, which was looking at the reasons for a board to have goals. What are the commonly accepted components of board goals at community colleges? And we looked at the process for a board to, and had a discussion about the process for a board to develop their own board goals or priorities. Normally at community colleges, this is a relatively easy streamlined task because they're usually updating existing goals or priorities that they've had in place over the years. And this time it's, it's more difficult for this board because there aren't existing board goals from previous years. So they're starting from scratch. So we looked at several colleges' examples of board goals. We actually went to websites of other community colleges and looked at their board goals and spent some time discussing them. And then Ken Burke and I had looked at several more colleges and picked out some model goals that we, we thought that the board could discuss and consider. And so they did look at the model goals. They have not, they will have their deliberations about their goals in a public session, but they just looked at information to help them develop the process they want to use to develop their board goals and eventually adopt them. And then add some model district board goals or college board goals from other colleges. And then tonight you're going to hear more about the, or in the future, you're going to hear more about this as the board goes through its deliberations in public. Also, the, one of the final things I want to report on is this morning, the policy subcommittee met. And again, you're going to be hearing more about that from the trustees who are involved in it. But I wanted to take a minute just to commend this subcommittee for the work they're doing. Trustee Wagner and Zimmerman, Dr. Swain and Shannon Goodrich have spent a ton of time and effort in developing recommendations for the full board's consideration at public meetings for the policies for which the board is responsible, their own internal policies of board governance. In doing that, they looked at, again, best practices. They looked at examples of other colleges and they looked at Idaho code and the requirements for trustees in the state of Idaho. So they've spent a lot of time and effort bringing recommendations forward for the full board to consider and then to have a dialogue and discussion and make further revisions to the policies so that the policies are very much understood and agreed to by the trustees whose responsibility it is to adhere to them and keep them updated in the future. So congratulations to that subcommittee. You've, you've done a really good job. And lastly, I just want to end by saying that for some reason I couldn't sleep with the first night here. Got up early and I decided I wanted to drive out to Soundpoint. I've heard a lot about the annex. And so I just wanted to go see it. I like to see the entire college when I work with a college. And once again, I was really impressed by the dedication and commitment of the personnel who worked there. I've seen it here and at the workforce training center, Parker Center, everywhere I've been. The commitment of the personnel here to the students and to the communities that you serve is admirable. You know that you change lives. You saw it in all of your ceremonies that, that colleges have at the end of the year. So I do want to end by just on behalf of Ken Burke and myself and ACCT, thanking you for the work that you do, for the opportunity to work with you and to just really congratulate you on another year. And hopefully you can all get some much needed rest over the summer. Any questions or anything that trustees?
Trustees, thank you, Debbie. We appreciate the time and dedication that UN can have given us these past several months. It's just a lot. So we look forward to our continued work with you.
Thank you.
This is our last board meeting prior, thank you. This is our last board meeting prior to the college meeting with the commissioners on NWCCU on June 23rd. Myself as board chair will be traveling with Dr. Swain and several other colleges senior leadership to present in front of NWCCU ourselves. And I just also like to personally thank our faculty and staff, my fellow trustees, Dr. Swain and our NIC community who continue to put students first and express our shared passion to affirm NIC's accreditation status. NIC is a gem to North Idaho, North Idaho. While our progress may not always be seen by all or read about in the news, we are making progress to set aside differences aside and work together for the betterment of all. As we work together, I'm pleased to share that Steve Kurtz, the college's director of planning, strategy and effectiveness and NIC's accreditation liaison officer has decided he isn't ready for retirement just yet. And Steve has decided to stay with us as the college's accreditation liaison officer. One of the reasons for Steve's change of heart beyond his love of NIC is seeing the progress we are making and the hope that many are feeling and the continued desire to unite and work to secure a bright future for NIC. So thank you, Steve, and glad you're here. And moving to
Public comment.
Public comment. The list is right here. Ron Hartman.
You have a piece to read before.
Oh, thank you. And I do have something I'd like to read. If you come to the deck, but, but I would like to say something for a couple of minutes, if I may. There it is. Thank you. Again, the board welcomes public comment at our regularly scheduled monthly board meetings. And tonight is one of those board meetings. This is the time for the board to listen to your comments, concerns, celebrations and challenges that members of our community wish to share with each of us. Our role as trustees is to listen respectfully. It is not a time for the board to interact or ask questions. If there is a question by one of our commenters tonight, I ask that President Swain keep track of those questions so administration can work with the board to have answers available at future time. Based on our college's policy, members of the public will keep their comments to topics listed on items on tonight's agenda. When is your time to come forward and provide comment? Please state your name for the record and identify the agenda item you wish to speak about. Each speaker will have two minutes for their comments. Disorderly speech or action, name calling or personal attacks, obscene or indecent remarks and derogatory comments on personalities is not acceptable. I also ask the audience to please refrain from any outbursts that are disruptive to the speaker or the board's ability to listen to the person who is providing public comment. If you would like to provide public comment to the board of trustees, but choose not to speak tonight, you can always email the board at any time at board@nic.edu. I believe I speak for all the trustees and want to say this board appreciates listening to all of our stakeholders in the wide range of viewpoints and the passions felt for NIC. Ron Hartman. You're recognized. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ron Hartman, Coeur d'Alene resident. Topic is budget. I am now up here for the third meeting in a row to learn if the 2024 budget for NIC Foundation staff salary and benefits. I have also filed a public information request at NIC on May 29th. I know for a fact that the 2022 annual fiscal report on page 43 shows NIC paid the NIC Foundation $271,084 for staff salary and benefits. So at this point in time, I assume the 2024 budget includes at least $271,084 for NIC Foundation staff salaries and benefits. Therefore, I request the trustees do not approve the 2024 budget today because NIC Foundation is an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit, nonprofit charitable, charitable organization governed by a volunteer board of directors. Hopefully sometime I'm going to get an answer to this. Thank you.
At the end of Sarah's presentation.
Should I say that?
Yeah.
I think tonight, stay tuned. I think it's going to be addressed at the presentation meeting tonight. Next on the list is Deborah Rose. And Erin Ferraro, you're on deck. Talking, please state your name and your agenda item. And if you forget.
Deborah Rose and policy and attorney. I'm here tonight to make a couple of board policy suggestions. First, the college attorney should not represent anyone affiliated with the college on any matter, private or public. Representing himself as the college's attorney likely outside the scope of his duties, public records requests reveal Mr. McComber, it seems, has done legal work on behalf of the personal affairs of certain trustees and a private citizen, then charged the taxpayers for this work. This may sound like an outlandish claim. Keep in mind, however, I'm the person that stood right here telling the board and the community, Michael Barnes was not a legal resident of Idaho while he sat on this board. I wasn't wrong about Barnes's residency and I'm now providing evidence questioning if Mr. McComber has charged the taxpayers for providing personal legal services to help his friends with a vendetta that is based on falsehoods. In the event, the college should have to act against any person that the attorney had represented previously. The attorney might not be able to pursue such action due conflict of interest according to the professional code of conduct. Putting the college's existence at risk is unacceptable. With this statement in mind, my second policy suggestion is, should the behavior of any trustee be deemed a threat to NIC's accreditation as the result of an investigation undertaken by the college's accreditation agency, that trustee would be required to immediately tender their resignation. The fundamental principles that encourage success in public representation are competency, accountability and integrity. Implementing these policy changes would encourage board and attorney accountability, competence, competency and integrity in the service to the NIC community.
Thank you. And Erin.
Mr. Chair, I completely deny everything that was just said about allegations regarding my activities for people and charging the college. It's absolutely absurd. Thank you.
Erin Ferraro and Ed DePriest, you're on deck.
Yeah, my name is Erin Ferraro. I am an instructor at NIC. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and not on behalf of the college. But I am speaking up for those that have been harassed by members of this board. Trustee Banducci, at the last board meeting, I found it difficult to be lectured on integrity, especially by someone who has clearly demonstrated the opposite in the past. There are plenty of YouTube highlights of your behavior, so I need not discuss them now.
Do you have an agenda item like specific to policy?
Yes. I'm speaking to policy.
To improve policy, go for it.
What's the policy?
Your campaign finances.
Have a policy number? Is it on the agenda?
Policy.
Which, which policy?
Your campaign finances are fully available online.
It's probably 2.01, 0.02 responsibilities, duties and standards of good practice.
Is it, is it on the agenda? That's what I'm looking for.
Yes, it is.
If we can pause our time.
It's a first read on tab three under new business.
Okay, do you, do you have wording in the policy that you want to address? You can turn a microphone on, then speak, speak to that.
Yes.
Throwing allegations.
I do not condemn violence. It is not okay what happened to you, trustee Banducci. Workplace violence is never okay.
How is this in the policy?
Workplace violence comes in many forms, not just physical. It can be verbal, non-verbal or written. It's an act or threat meant to intimidate, harass or humiliate. It can involve bullying, sabotage or sexual harassment. Chair McKenzie, you asked us to consider how our comments can help move this college forward. I will tell you. I will ask that going forward, trustee Banducci, Chair McKenzie and anyone else that it may apply to will not harass, intimidate or bully the staff at this college.
Thank you very much. This is Ed DePriest and we have a Michael McGowan on deck.
Ready?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Your name.
I'm Eddie Priest. I'm a Cootney County resident and did about 60 plus units at NIC years ago. I'm going to talk about the attorney and the budget as they're both kind of intertwined. First of all, it's kind of amazing how there's a lot of talk about intimidation and harassment and what went on here a week ago is, is, is pretty disgusting. As I think most know, the college attorney should be focused on educational law and helping ensure that the actions of the board are legal and meet statutory requirements, not to look for loopholes or create them to achieve ideological agenda of board members. What qualified attorney in his or her right mind would want anything to do with this situation we have right now? I think that the recent legal actions and costs have demonstrated the need for qualified attorney with educational law expertise. In regards to the budget, the recent court rulings ordered that President Swain's attorney fees and court costs be paid by his opposition. Who's going to pay those attorney fees and costs? How much are they and where are they in the budget? As is indicated by the numerous court decisions in favor of President Swain, who had every right to file this lawsuit and against the actions of the majority trustees and their attorney, it appears that the entire litigation will run into the hundreds of thousands of dollars after Mr. McComber's fees, costs and the court rulings. Is the taxpayer going to pay for those fees and costs? Shouldn't those who are the proximate cause of those costs be personally liable for the costs instead of the taxpayers? So much for the conservative platform of fiscal conservatism and personal accountability.
Mr. Chair.
And responsibility.
Excuse me.
I guess that doesn't apply when it's in pursuit of, I guess that doesn't apply when it's in pursuit of ideological agendas at the tax.
Just.
Mr. DePriest.
Well, I just didn't see it.
You have 13 seconds left, but you're away. So sure, please, please give him his 13 seconds if you would.
No, I, I was. Big guy. I was pretty much done. And I, I, I'm kind of curious about the interruption there, but still that's, that's okay. That's the way it works. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay. Michael McGowan, I'm McGowan, and you're addressing NWCC report and enrollment. And I don't necess, help, help me out, anyone. I don't see that on the budget, but we're gonna.
That's what I wanted to ask you, whether this is pertinent to the agenda. It really has to do with accreditation more than anything else.
Well, you know, I think, I think we allow it and I'm going to interpret your enrollment as part of a budget adjustment to the enrollment that we got. So you have your two minutes.
If you like.
We'll hear what you have to say.
All right, thank you. So a couple of months ago, I've spoken about the declining enrollment as a national trend that it should not be an accreditation issue. So I read in the NCWC, NWCCU report, page eight, they begin to talk about accreditation, sorry, the declining enrollment as if it's an issue. Then farther on page 20, they give a stat. I don't know where they get the stat from, but they say that past 10 years at NIC enrollment has declined 48%. It sounds like a big number, right? But the thing is that the National Student Clearinghouse Research Center, who's the official, not official, but the best source for this kind of information says that over the past 12 years, the decline nationwide, community colleges, the average is 40%. So 48, 40%. If you talk about a standard deviation there, maybe 10% above and below that. So 48% is going to be within that standard deviation off the normal. In order to show that enrollment is a problem that's specific to management here, you need to show that there's something a lot worse than 8% going on here. And also enrollment itself as an issue really isn't an issue, right? I mean, you have community colleges out there with hundreds of students. You have colleges with thousands of students. So the numbers don't matter unless there's a decline such that you can attribute it to the management. If the management is an accreditation issue, then that's an accreditation issue, but enrollment itself is not. So I'd just like to ask the NWCCU, and if Dr. Swain could serve as my liaison here, how do they justify this? Where do they get this continual insistence on the enrollment thing as if it really matters? Thank you very much.
Rebecca Gann, please. And thank you for coming down. And you're addressing legal counsel. Please state your name.
Yes, my name is Rebecca Gann. I, little bit about me, I'm an NIC grad. I went to NIC. I even worked on staff at the writing center for several years. I did my, I did my bachelor's of English at U of I through Coeur d'Alene's program with NIC. I would not have been able to stay here and do my schooling otherwise. And then I went to U of I in Moscow for my masters and just finished hoping to get here. And my point is, please do what you can to fix these problems. And one of those problems is fixing the legal counsel issue. If you really want to do what's best for NIC, pick the legal counsel that is qualified. Those who actually have worked with education, know what's going on with education, understands FERPA, which is hard to understand. As someone who has worked at a college, I understand. which is hard to understand. As someone who has worked at a college, I understand FERPA to some degree, and it's hard to deal with that. We need lawyers who understand it. Please do what's right and pick the ones who are qualified, even if they are seven hours away. I understand that we should pick the ones that are closer, but we should be caring about qualifying measures, not distance in this case, and the crediting board will care more about that.
Thank you for coming down. Karen Sheppler. Thank you for helping me with that. I do try desire to get everyone's names correct. Addressing policy and I think presidential goals, or is that board goals or?
Presidential goals is listed in the agenda. My name is Karen Sheppler. I'm addressing policy this evening, specifically about communication. I saw several changes in a couple of the policies on how the community would address the college and that only issues of board policy should be addressed to the board and any other issues of policy should be addressed to the president's office. So we know that there's a lot of things that the community gets up here to talk about that aren't necessarily policy. So as I'm looking at that, I don't know how it is that the college wants us to then communicate with the college outside of writing letters to the editor, which this board has made pretty clear they don't like. But we'll continue to do that if that's how how the board and the college would like us to communicate. I know I've sent at least six emails and I haven't even gotten a read receipt back. So I don't know if you're getting my emailed comments because I could get up here and tell you about all the commas that are misplaced or the incorrect sentences or the lack of code references in the the updates that I saw because I I see errors like that pretty frequently. But it's not a good use of my two minutes. It's not a good use of your two minutes, but if you're not getting my emails, it's a waste of everybody's time. I don't even know if you're getting my emails. So it'd be good to know what the policy is and how we want to address the college outside of policy questions. Thank you.
I think we have notes on that. Thank you. And Robert Sheppler.
My name is Robert Sheppler and I live here in Coeur d'Alene and I'd like to speak tonight about two items. The first is the budget and the second is addressing some of the policy changes that have been made or being discussed tonight. Speaking as a local taxpayer, when I got my notice in the mail the last month and noticed my payment for my escrow jumped a hundred dollars a month, I became very concerned. I recognize that is not the board issue, but the spending of tax dollars in wasteful methods by the board is an issue for me. Trustee Zimmerman brought it up in March. I brought it up last month, two weeks ago, and I'm bringing it up again. And I'm hoping it's being addressed tonight by the personal issue that was added to the agenda, but why are we still paying Dr. South over twenty-five thousand dollars a month in pay and benefits when he is not contributing to the college in any way other than serving his leverage for lawsuits against the college? The other part with the budget is I also agree, we need to hire professional qualified attorney representation for our school. Spending money on a bad attorney is simply opening ourselves up to greater lawsuits. The policy being discussed tonight, one of the points is about professional services being contracted and that specifically mentioned the attorney, the architect, the banking structure. And I would think for the community, we would rather make sure we have qualified services that we are paying for and possibly overpaying a little bit than underqualified that we end up paying more for in the long run because of missteps that have led to other lawsuits and overbilling that has occurred. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we're going to move to celebrating success, health professions and student success. And I'm going to take the moment to address an agenda item later. I, there's presidential goals. I took the original as proposed in the board packet and I spent late last night editing and they're very similar, but they just add a little bit more context to the presidential goals that I'm hoping to speak to later. If we could pass these down. Just these can. Keep them all together. Or there's multiple pages. So the the original is is in the board packet and the proposed is is the is as 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 I've it is.
I don't think I got.
I think, no, no, I think I separated. Put those back together.
Okay, thank you. Glad you're to the microphone. Please state your name and welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you, John Gerdunia. I'm the program director for the Physical Therapist Assistant Program and I'm here on behalf of the Health Professions Division. I have with me three success stories that we'd like to share with the, you know, McKenzie, Dr. Swain, and the rest of the board of graduates of our programs. I'll introduce just real quick. We have from the radiography, radio radiography technology program, which actually just had their board exam with a hundred percent pass rate on their exams, just to plug that. We have Daniel Holland. He is a two thousand twelve grad and he's currently the Director of Diagnostic Imaging at Bonner General Health. He also is Ben, a board member of our advisory board for the Rad Tech program since two thousand eighteen and is currently the chair. And then we're going to hear from Martha Morel. Yes, okay, so she is a dual success. So she started out in our medical assistant program in assisting, did I get that? Okay, in two thousand and eighteen and then went on to finish the nursing program here in two thousand and twenty-two and is, are you working on a master's degree? No, okay, she's got her bachelor's at LC, yes, I'll let her do that. But she, in between, she worked at Cootney Residency Family Medicine and is currently employed at Valley Hospital in Spokane Valley. And then we're going to hear lastly from Carly Daniels, who graduated from the Dental Hygiene Program in two thousand and twenty-two. First class of that new program. So without further ado, turn it over to Dan.
Well, thank you very much for having me come tonight and just kind of really try to highlight the health professions, specifically the Rad Tech program and really the impact that not only it has on the graduates themselves, but also the communities that we do get to go out and serve. So I really appreciate that opportunity. When I first graduated from the University of Idaho, actually in two thousand and eight, with degrees in political science and philosophy, while it was a wonderful education, it didn't leave me standing in a place where I could provide for my family and really have a direction for impact on the community that I wanted to live in. So in contrast, graduating two thousand and twelve from North Idaho College in the Rad Tech program, it really provided two opportunities for me. The first was right out of school to be able to actually have a means to to provide, have a means to have a family and survive in this community. And then secondly, a wonderful standing point for a career with massive growth potential. Since then, for the last eleven years, you know, NIC really helped stir a drive to try to find new ways to get involved, new ways to educate myself, new ways to impact the community that I live in. Two thousand and fourteen, I got my computer tomography registry. Two thousand and fifteen, my bone desatometry registry. Two thousand and eighteen, my quality management registry. In two thousand and seventeen, I was given the opportunity to lead the Diagnostic Imaging Group at Bonner General. And while we are a fairly small critical access hospital, we have a fairly robust imaging department. We have MRI, nuclear medicine, x-ray, ultrasound, echocardiology, bone desatometry, mammography, and computer tomography. Since then as well, in two thousand and eighteen, I was able to step onto the Rad Tech Advisory Board or we were able to really have a big impact on getting Matthew Nolan in to help really redirect this Rad Tech program and he's done a wonderful job. As stated, the the class that just graduated, they're scoring at the highest level across the country right now for their exit exams. It's a wonderful, wonderful program. I then decided, maybe against my better judgment, but given all the other things, decided to go back and try to get one more degree and I'll be finishing up my masters in health administration from Colorado State with an emphasis on organizational leadership and change management. It should be graduating November fifth of this year and currently sitting as the Chair of the Rad Tech Advisory Board. And, you know, all of all that information is great, but really, how does it actually impact the communities that we live in? Because it's all just, you know, registries, education. And so I'm going to highlight two real quick projects at Bonner General and what we were able to produce and how we were able to actually impact our community. One is with breast cancer. We're able to raise community support and renovate an entire area and add in a second mammography machine, which provides double the capacity for detecting cancer. And given that we are a rural community, by definition, our patients are high risk. And so we're able to really get out there and to try to make a difference in in detecting cancer early for our patients. Secondly, given that we are rural, there's a couple of different items with time sensitive emergencies that are incredibly crucial when you're having a stroke, when you get in a car accident, or when you're having a STEMI or a certain type of heart attack. When you're out in Moyet Springs and you're forty-five minutes away from Bonner General, an hour and a half away from a cath lab, being able to get you in, get you on a CT table incredibly quickly and get you out the door is the difference between life and death. And with the population increases that we have seen in North Idaho, with one CT, one CT machine in Sandpoint, we were struggling to actually have enough table space in order to deal with our ER patients. So we developed a pretty extensive capital campaign, garnered a bunch of community support to put in a second CT scanner so that if you are up in North Idaho, you do have an accident, we're going to be able to get you in and then get you down to either Sacred Heart or Cootney for whatever sort of catheterization that you would you would need. So lastly, third, just in recap throughout this journey over the last eleven years, you know, I've really found that what started at NIC has really sparked a a drive to try to impact the community. And so I just given the complexity with everything that's happening from accreditation, board governance issues, it's wonderful to see that we're having so many great teachers that are impacting these students and getting them back out into community to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name.
Hello, I'm Martha. I just recently graduated from the nursing program. So I started.
We're happy for you.
So I started my journey back in two thousand and seventeen. So I actually started in kitchens. I was cooking as most people that hadn't gone through higher education. I didn't really choose my career. It kind of chose me. And I kind of hit another roadblock in my in that job and decided that I needed a change. And at that point, I was thinking about something kind of more lateral move. And I remembered hearing about medical assistant from like my husband had mentioned it in passing. And I thought that was something that I could do. And so I looked into it and saw that NIC had programs and I had done some courses previously. So I was like, that sounds pretty cool. So, let's see. The other cool thing too is that the program was set up in a way that I could do it while working full time because I still needed to do that to help support my family. During that time, I also realized that I needed a job that I could retire on because medical assisting still didn't pay that great. And so registered nursing really stuck out to me. I was always really good at taking care of people ever since I was a little kid. And the thing that really stuck in my way when I was younger was the thought of bodily fluids being gross. So it really just finally clicked and I was like, all right, I can get over that. And so I decided to continue on for my nursing degree here at NIC. And just having this college in this town was super helpful for me because not having to commute. There were a few classes that it wouldn't have even worked for. I had one math instructor that insisted that tests had to be taken on Monday and I had to leave work on my lunch break, come down to the testing center, take my test and then go back. So if it was a different place, it wouldn't have worked. So, yeah, it really helped me a lot. And the nursing program here, I mean, obviously there's someone over there that wooed really loud. So they get it, but it's an amazing nursing program and it really helped me be prepared for being out there in the real world. I graduated in December twenty twenty-two. And the other thing that was really cool was that Lewis Clark State College has this, I don't know what to call it, like an agreement or whatever with NIC. So I was able to complete my bachelor's just this last May. So I'm done, finally.
Articulation agreement, I believe.
Yeah, from twenty seventeen till twenty twenty-three, I was just in school the whole time. So I'm glad to be done and to have my RN and with an RN, basically the sky's the limit. So I'm really excited and really glad to have done it here at NIC.
Awesome. Welcome and please state your name.
I'm taller. Hi, my name's Carly Daniels. Ever since I was a little girl, I have wanted to be a real life tooth fairy or what adults would say, work in the dental field and North Idaho College let me achieve that. I graduated from Coeur d'Alene High School in two thousand and seventeen and when I graduated, the NIC Dental Hygiene Program was still in the works. While I was waiting for the program to get started, I wanted to get my feet wet in the dental field. I was actually in the first group of students to complete the NIC Workforce Training Center's Dental Assisting Program in two thousand and eighteen. I then worked as a dental assistant for years and continued to work on my prerequisites through North Idaho College while working full time, hoping that the Dental Hygiene Program would start in the near future. I love dental assisting and I'm very thankful that I started my journey with that as I feel like it helped me prepare better for furthering my education and position in dental hygiene. When I finally got the news that there was a hygiene program at NIC, I couldn't have been more excited. I feel like we were waiting for years. I applied, got accepted, and then the next two years of my life, I made some of the best friends and the best memories, all while getting a great education. I was the president of my class of fifteen students. And during school, we did many public outreach activities, including a free Veterans Day. We did free sealants. We also volunteered at the Special Olympics. We also took care of countless patients, all while studying and doing bookwork to prepare us for working as a dental hygienist in the real world. It wasn't easy, but it was definitely worth it. Before I graduated, I accepted a full-time position at the beginning of November at a local dental office with Dr. Mike Bloom. Our penning ceremony took place on December fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-two and I received two awards. I received the Oral B Chairside Educator Award, which was given for exemplifying patient-focused care, education, and compassion towards patients. I also received the Student American Dental Hygienist Association Award, which was given to recognize strong interest and involvement in our student chapter and the future of dental hygiene. After finishing the program in December, I then took an eight-hour board exam in January and waited two extremely long weeks for my test results. But I got the news that I passed. I received my license in February and started work as soon as I could as I was very eager to start my new career. It has now been four months working as a registered dental hygienist and I couldn't be more thankful for North Idaho College, Janice McClelland, our Dental Hygiene Program Director, and our numerous instructors that helped us along the way. Since graduating, along with working full time, I have also given a guest lecture at the NIC Workforce Training Center to the Dental Assistance Students. I've been part of a local study club where hygienists in our area meet once a month to have continuing education to further our knowledge to better serve our patients. And now you may be thinking, what's next? Because I'm already planning that too. I plan to hopefully help and be part of a community health program in our area to serve those who are not able to access dental services. I plan to further my education and achieve a bachelor's degree. I have a strong desire to help teach at the NIC Dental Hygiene Clinic and be able to share my passion for learning and dentistry with the students here. And I have also thought about furthering my education and going to dental school. I'm excited to see where my new career will take me, as there's so many opportunities out there, but none of it would have been possible without NIC. And as Nelson Mandela once said, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." Thank you.
Hey, any further questions?
I believe not. Thank you very much for coming down. I enjoyed it. Hearing your stories and good luck in life.
Great job.
Moving to President's Report. And actually, if I could, give me a sec. Before I turn the agenda item over to Dr. Swain, I have a few thoughts I'd like to share about the progress of the board and our President and how we're working together this past few weeks. Dr. Swain will be sharing his evening goals and priorities as we look to the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year. And he's discussed these goals with trustees, individual conversations, and each of us, and appreciate his openness and collaboration of this goal-setting process. So, Dr. Swain, would you like to share more?
Thanks. Yes, I'm going to start tonight with a quick update on accreditation and the process. We received another email from the NWCCU about an updated process. There's, this is, you know, we're the third institution to go through, show cause in the United States, and so probably the first that NWCCU has dealt with. So they keep updating and just providing us more information as we go along. So we got an email that kind of gave us a little finer detail on what's going to happen when we go there. The hearing will be on June twenty-third. The, the team that came to visit, the Chair of that team that came to visit on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, will have ten minutes by herself in front of the full commission. About thirty commissioners, I don't know how many will be present, but she'll be presenting for about ten minutes in front of the full commission. And then we'll be invited in some introductions, and I'll make a five-to-ten-minute introductory, in, in five-to-ten-minute introductory comments. Are, are all of the input that we provided, everything that has been submitted to the NWCCU has been provided to all the commissioners. And then they have appointed what they call a primary and secondary commissioner, who are, I, I, I don't know how to characterize it, but they're going to kind of state the case, ask, ask questions, ask questions of us that we'll have to respond to. So they'll have a primary commissioner and a secondary commissioner that will ask us questions for five to ten minutes. And then there may be some follow-up questions. And then the NWCCU Board Chair will ask the, the full group if there are any more questions. So if you think about this, we have about forty-five minutes. And we, when you take out the introductory comments and, and everything else, we'll have about ten or fifteen minutes to answer questions during the middle of that hearing. At, at the end of that, I'll submit, or I'll provide three to five minutes of comments. And at that, at that point, we'll be asked to be excused, and the commission will go into executive session and debate. And, and I don't know if they make a decision then, but they'll have about fifteen minutes to discuss, debate, and, and make a decision if that's, if that's what they need to do. And then within thirty days of that, so by the twenty-third of July, we should have a response back. That's the current schedule of what we're expecting to see when we go out there on the twenty-third of June. More information may be coming, but that's as of Sunday night, I think that we got that update. I do want to spend a minute talking about recruiting, and a couple of people have, have made comments about that. And, and yes, across the United States, there is a decline, particularly at community colleges. And there's kind of what they call the demographic cliff, where the, because of the baby boomers and Gen, and Gen X, all the declining and declining birth rates, there's kind of a cliff that hits about twenty twenty-five, where there are just not as many people graduating from high school. So they're not going, even if the percentage stays the same, they're not going on to college at the same, there's not as many people going on to college. So when, when I got back, we started having reports on enrollment, starting around the first week of April. And at that time, we started being able to, we, we finally have the systems in place so we can look at where we are now and where we were exactly that date a year ago. And so at that time, first week of April, we were down year-over-year twenty-two point seven percent. Which, again, as someone pointed out, that being down twenty percent this year is not significantly different from the national norms. However, we're not accepting that sitting down. So we pulled the team back together, the recruiting team back together. We have about thirty people that work on the recruiting team. We pulled them back together. And now, since the first week of April to the twenty-ninth of May, when we got our last update, we went from twenty-two percent, twenty-two point seven percent down year-over-year to just five point six percent down year-over-year. So we made a seventeen, roughly seventeen percent improvement in, in our, in our enrollment in the, in the past eight weeks. So that's, that's pretty impressive, I think. And I think as, as participants in this, you all should be very proud of those, that the thirty-team enrollment management team that is, has pulled this together, refining marketing materials, working on enrollment bottlenecks, trying to prove efficiencies, and, and then, and even building the data systems that allow us to compare this year to last year and beyond. So that's, that's a significant amount of work to build all those systems and to be able to do the analysis. And I, I, I'm very proud of the work that they've done. Steve Kurtz has, has led a lot of the data teams and Laura Rumppler on the, on the marketing, but I'd say every, everyone has really made a significant effort to, to improve that. And we'll continue to, now, now that we have the data, we can start tracking the, when we do something with marketing, or we do an activity in the community targeted on enrollment, we can start to look at the impact of those and make changes based on the impact that we can now measure. So in a lot of the, when we're talking about increasing our marketing, one of the things that we do now is a lot of electronic marketing. And, and it's very, you know, sometimes challenging. We tell you we're doing a lot more marketing and nobody sees it. Well, it's because we're probably not marketing to you. Just FYI. If you've already got a degree, or, you know, if you're, if you're, if you're my, my age, we're, you know, a lot of the marketing right now is going to high school graduates. Some of the demographic that attends courses at a, at a higher percentage. So those are the target markets. But we also have a big increase in non-traditional, so fifty-five and older. So those, the fifty-five and older will get marketing material, probably not right now, but in the future, you'll start to get marketing material delivered to you electronically. So that's, it's very important. I, I also, scholarships is a big part of our, our effort in, in terms of enrollment. And a, and a nod to the NIC Foundation. They started providing funding to the college. So they, they raised money, and then the proceeds of the capital, so the interest that they earn off of the capital, they provide to the college, and, and we are able to then use that in scholarships. So in October, we, we asked them to start moving that up so that we can start offering scholarships earlier to help influence the situation. And so back in October, they provided nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars that was available to the, to the college to, in, in scholarships. And just last week, they provided another two hundred and four thousand dollars that we can offer on scholarships. So that's about one, almost one point two million dollars in scholarships that has been raised by the foundation to provide to our students for, for scholarships. We've lost, we've launched a bunch of scholarship-focused marketing campaigns. So one of the, one of the things that we started right after I got back, we, we started marketing and sending out letters to the graduating students from the five northern counties and offering them scholarships ranging from one thousand dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars. The first letter that went out went to about nineteen hundred students. We've got about two hundred and twenty now that have accepted those, those scholarships from the five northern counties, again, ranging from one thousand to twenty-five hundred. That includes eight students that completed their GEDs. Many of them were likely homeschooled or finished school, some other, you know, finished school through our GED program. So eight of those students received scholarships. So out of that two hundred and twenty total, one hundred and sixty-six students from Cootney County have received scholarships valued at three hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. So that's a pretty significant amount of money that we're providing to those students in order to help them get started, as you heard with some of their education journey. So one hundred and sixty-six scholarships awarded about, again, about three hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars in, for just Cootney County. I also want to update you on the vaccinated status for our practicum venues. There, there is really no update. We, we provided a, a brief update back two weeks ago. No significant changes. We're working with all of our practicum partners in the area to reduce vaccine requirements and to encourage them to allow waivers so that we can get waivers for our students. And, and I'll just, you know, with the, the federal government reducing some of the requirements for vaccinations, the hospitals are now able to reduce some of those requirements. So this is a really dynamic time, and we hope that by August, things will settle down, we'll have a better, much better picture. So we'll provide a much more thorough update in August with updates on where we stand with accreditation, or sorry, with vaccine for our practicum venues. The last thing I'm going to talk about is campus security. There's, there's been an emphasis by the board on looking at campus security. The Dean of Students is currently at, in Boise, attending the Idaho State Threat Assessment Conference. And he's going to coordinate with the Idaho Office of School Safety and discuss their, they do a free threat assessment. So he's going to get that and, and look at what they, you know, consider what they look at in their threat assessment. They provide it free, but it may not do everything we want. So we're going to use that as a baseline and then consider what else might need to be done. But then the nice thing about attending this conference is this is where all the vendors will be, the, that do threat assessments outside of just the, the free stuff we get from the Office of School Safety. So he's collecting their, their information so that if we decide we need to go out and get additional work on the threat assessment, we'll, we'll have contacts with all those vendors to do that. And I, Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes my President's Report for the night.
Thank you. Is there any questions from fellow trustees? Trustee Wagner.
Not, not on this topic, but on another one.
If you go for it, if you feel as appropriate.
Could we take a break for five minutes? We've been sitting for
Yes, let's take a break for ten. Five, five, just for five.
I only need
Reconvene at eight o'clock.
Reconvene at eight o'clock. That's simple for everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And if, I don't think there's any discussion for this. It's, well, we shall, all those in favor of adopting the amended minutes, say aye. 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 I hear four votes saying aye with none opposed. That is, the meeting minutes are passed. Thank you. We're going to actually modify, jump down to action resolution on changing athletic conferences. And Dr. Swain, I think you have a recommendation before the board. So in, in December, the board motioned for the president, NIC president, to come before the board with a recommendation on athletic, looking at athletics. And I think Dr. Swain has such a recommendation.
Correct. In, in December of twenty twenty-two, the board was looking for a recommendation by NIC's president for conference affiliation. And tonight, I'm formally recommending that we transfer teams to the National Junior College Athletic Association and Senior West Athletic Conference with a goal of completing the transition by the fall semester of twenty twenty-four. And I'd ask the board for a resolution to approve this direction.
Is there a motion? And I'll read it for, for the board to pass this resolution in approval of this recommendation. And if that motion comes before the board, we can have a discussion then, trustee Wagner.
Right. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Dr. Swain's.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
I second.
I think you have yours written down. I think Shannon can get.
Yeah, I can.
Meeting minutes. We don't need to read it. Time is late. All those, so is motion. We have a second by trustee Zimmerman. Thank you. It discussions before the board. Trustee Banducci.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a, a couple items on this one. While I have been an advocate for athletics and I have supported, well, first I voted against moving out of the NJCAA and the SWAC initially. And I've thought that that would be something we should revisit. And I've supported moving back to the NJCAA and the SWAC for a number of years. Receiving resistance for various reasons, which I will not go into now, some of which were very self-motivated by some for various reasons. If we're going to make that move, there's a couple of things that have to come with that. One is, is that we need to have one tuition rate for all athletes on a roster, just like it used to be. And that's regardless of where they come from. So there's no in-state, out-of-state, wooey, there's nothing. Everybody's treated the same. If you're on a roster.
For, for athletic participants.
For athletic participants. Secondly, we have to be fully funded if we're going to do this. If we're going to go to the national level. And I think that was one of the discussions is that the NWAAC is a, is kind of a part-time conference. The coaches are paid in a part-time way. They make, you know, generally eight to ten thousand dollars. We pay it full-time. Commensurate with, you know, proper recruiting and the schedule of a, a national conference. You know, forty, fifty thousand, whatever, plus or minus is the various, you know, salary ranges. Depending on experience and where they're at on the, on the grid with the steps and all that. And I think, you know, it was looked at either we stay in WAC and we adjust the salaries or we go to the SWAC and, and we continue to pay where we're at. Because we were the only school that, that paid at that level in our current conference. But if we're going to do that also, the other thing we have to do is we have to get fully funded grant and aid and the scholarships and the dollars. And we need to be able to have the proper budget for recruiting because we're going to need higher level athletes to compete at that level. So I just want to make sure that if we're going to do this, we need to, we need to do it right. We need to make sure we have a proper athlete's weight room. We've not properly had that. There's a proposal to move some of that into the rec center, but it's going to have limited hours. And I think there's going to be a problem with access for our varsity athletes. So, and then we've also talked about maybe looking at facilities. I'll suggest, suggest right now, we have some immediate needs to take care of our existing teams and low-hanging fruit, like women's wrestling should be addressed before we start spending lots of money on, on buildings and other things. We had a gentleman that was quarterbacking that, has the contacts, came from the NCAA, had the experience. I'd even like to recommend that Mr. Forkham possibly retained as just a consultant for maybe three months or six months or something to help us through this transition. Because he has all the contacts and had lined up the dominoes pretty well. And we were probably within a week of all this coming to fruition. You know, it's interesting, we've, we've cited all these concerns with accreditation to why we couldn't do some of the things with athletics. While I find us still in, in jeopardy of accreditation and not much has changed. Suddenly here we are and we're promoting athletics, which again, I'm not complaining, but it puzzles me. As the, as the guy's been pushing this cart up the hill for years and years, mostly by myself. Makes me wonder what boosters, what foundation members, who, who's, who's behind this and who's pushing it? And, and so I'm not going to ask that too loudly or too hard. But if we're going to do this, let's have the right reasons for doing it and let's do it right. And let's make sure we have all the facilities. And one of those would be, again, we've talked about some different things and the soccer field seems to be a point of contention. I'd like to know is if we're going to ramp this up, one of the things that we could be doing is we could be working with Corlan High School potentially in some sort of an agreement to their new multipurpose facility. It would help them to justify it and get more use to it. We can play under the lights there so we can do it so we don't conflict with their use of it at the high school, some sort of a lease agreement. And that might take care of the problem of, of the soccer field. It seems to be an issue where it's at. Maybe that remains as a practice field or it's used for other purposes. So I think there's a, a lot to this that has to be thought through. But, but before I vote for change in conferences, I have to be assured that we're going to properly fund this thing, have the proper scholarships, the proper grant and aid. And that we're going to properly fund this so we can do this and, and our coaches aren't put at a disadvantage against the, the athletes that we're going to see from Salt Lake and from CSI and, and these other ones just in our region eighteen. And the last thing I'll say is if we're going to do this, I would, I would like to see us do it right now. Go as an independent. The way the NJCAA rules are, whether they get us in the league or not, if we're in the region, we are allowed to play in the postseason tournaments. We have to have a way to nationals. So we can go as an independent. The coaches, I think they'll be able to cobble together a schedule rather easily. People are always looking for contests. We can stay up in our tri-state area pretty easily. And so I'd like to see us just rip the band-aid off. And instead of having this one year of, of kind of in-between where we've told them we're leaving, but they're, they're probably not real happy with us. And I'm sure we're not going to get a whole lot of love from that. That we just go independent. We're in region eighteen. We're guaranteed still a shot at nationals. They have to let us into the postseason tournaments. So, so those are, those are kind of my conditions of doing this that I'd like to see. Go immediately, go independent, make sure we're fully funding it, make sure we have the tuition just like we used to do it. I think those are things that are important. And, and as an extension of that, just so people don't think, well, this is just a sports thing. There are certain other extracurricular cohorts that we have out there. And so maybe any group that's recruiting, you know, maybe some of those rules regarding tuition could apply to them also, so that everybody's treated equally, regardless of, of their resident state when they're being recruited into this. And that's a thought. So I, I don't know where that, how, how we implement that exactly. And I don't have a good handle on all the groups that would encompass. But there are some other extracurricular groups that, that may have recruiting. So, so that's something we can consider also, this for parity. So some of my thoughts there, I'd look for any discussion on this or where we go with this. I would like a commitment before we take a vote that we are going to fully fund these programs. We're going to provide them with the resources they need, the weight room they need, scholarships. And then I'd also like to make sure we have, who I think is probably the most qualified guy we've ever had on this campus for this job, I'd like to consider Mr. Forkham as, Dr. Forkham as someone that could assist us through this in, in a temporary way and that we go independent right now.
I'm going to give time to think if, if I could and not necessarily talk to that point. You're welcome to have the floor if you want to respond.
Sure. Well, I, I want to just say that, that my, my plan was to, if, if, if this is, my, my perception was that this was the consensus of the board. So to, to, to answer the question of why now and, and why do this, it's, it's, I, I got, I, I received no feedback from anyone outside. It just, it is, if it's the consensus of the board, then it's my job to try to make that happen. And so that's the only, my only reason, my only motivation is to support the consensus of the board. So the resolution, the reason why I needed the resolution tonight is to make sure that that is actually the consensus of the board. And then in August, we, we will come back with a more thorough report that addresses things like how we might improve the student-athlete experience, academic supports required, facility needs, team travel requirements, scholarship needs, Title IX implications, budget impact, and how we might expand the booster club to support the athletic program. So that's all things that I would like to include in a report in August. And so it'll address some of the concerns that trustee Banducci raised just now. And so I'm not, I'm not ready to, to make a, a recommendation or, or not on whether we do that now or an independent. I think we need to give a sell August to make that call. My, my goal in doing it tonight was to have some guidance from the board because July is the cutoff date for NWAAC. If we want to leave NWAAC without a penalty, we have to do that by July first. So that's, that's kind of the timing impetus. That's the only other external input that we've had is, is that, that date of July first for leaving.
I, I think those details you mentioned are factored into your recommendation that we can meet all those concerns. Timing is obviously, this is a complex issue. And I would just like to comment on the individual who public comment talked about enrollment and enrollment is and how it integrates to NWCCU's accreditation standards and eligibility requirements. Athletic advertisements is absolutely one way to grow enrollment. Institutions are complex and finances directly relate to a, to institutional viability. And I would just like to quote, I think this is the school superintendent of Jenny Netherlands. So I cannot emphasize enough how strong athletic programs can help turn around a campus academically. There may be other ways, but it's definitely a formula that works. A friend with athletic kids reminded me that often his kids spend more time with coaches than they do at home. The more we pour into our coaches, the more they pour into our kids. That's her words, I would use students, but I can't control some external factors, but I can treat our people like I know what they do matters. And absolutely, we would all like to see NIC succeed. And this is one way that the president is recommending to see NIC succeed. And I think, appreciate this recommendation coming before the board tonight. Is there anything else that people would like to say or discuss on the topic? I see no, and I think trustee Wagner is thinking. Just now. And so I'm not, I'm not ready to, to make a, a recommendation or, or not on whether we do that now or an independent. I think we need to give a sell August to make that call. My, my goal in doing it tonight was to have some guidance from the board. Because July is the cutoff date for N WAC. If we want to leave N WAC without a penalty, we have to do that by July first. So that's, that's kind of the timing impetus. That's the only other external input that we've had is, is that, that date of July first for leaving.
I, I think those details you mentioned are. Factored into your recommendation that we can meet all those concerns. Timing is obviously, this is a complex issue. And I would just like to comment on the individual who public comment talked about enrollment and enrollment is. And how it integrates to NWCCU's accreditation standards and eligibility requirements. Athletic advertisements is absolutely one way to grow enrollment. Institutions are complex and finances directly relate to it. To institutional viability. And I would just like to quote, I think this is the school superintendent. Of Jenny Netherlands. So I cannot emphasize enough how strong athletic programs can help turn around a campus academically. There may be other ways, but it's definitely a formula that works. A friend with athletic kids reminded me that often his kids spend more time with coaches than they do at home. The more we pour into our coaches, the more they pour into our kids. That's her words, I would use students, but I can't control some external factors, but I can treat our people like I know what they do matters. And absolutely, we would all like to see NIC succeed. And this is one way that the president is recommending to see NIC succeed. And I think. Appreciate this recommendation coming before the board tonight. Is there anything else that people would like to say or discuss on the topic? I see no, and I think trustee Wagner is thinking. To be clear, let's talk about the, the, the motion is to, if I, I think I have this written down. And I would just say, trustee Banducci, you, you have years of experience on this topic. And I, I believe follow on conversations with doctors, Dr. Swain to, to listen to your input and to ensure NIC's budget. As Dunn has heard your recommendations and input and considered your, your experience. And, and CEO's experience in running an institution as well. So.
Right. So what I'm hearing is Dr. Swain understands the concerns that.
Please lean into your microphone.
Banducci has and you're prepared. Oh, sorry. My understanding is Dr. Swain understands the concerns that. Trustee Banducci has and, and wants to come back and support those.
Okay. Are trustees prepared and equipped to vote on the topic? Okay. All those in favor of, let me read this. Motion to approve Dr. Swain's recommendation tonight is what's before the board regarding sports athletic conference participation. And all those in favor of approving his recommendation, say aye.
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 I hear four votes in aye and the chair votes aye. That would be a five oh vote on this topic of consensus. And thank you everyone for, thank you, President Swain. So. Okay, we are going to return back to the general fund budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Dr. Swain, would you like to introduce Sarah?
Sure, I'm, this is, this is our second read. This is the, the read where we need to approve the budget. Sarah, or Sarah and or Sarah and I have met with all the trustees and multiple times and, and. And worked to address all their questions. There, there, there may be some outstanding questions that we will continue to have to work on. That, that have been asked, but I, I think the, the ones, the immediate questions that have been asked have been answered. And there's, there's some that require more work that we'll continue to work on. But Sarah's put a lot of work into this budget. And so she's ready to present the, the budget proposal and hope that we are able to approve that tonight. So Sarah, if you will.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Swain. Good evening, Chair McKenzie, board, Dr. Swain and guests. Thank you. For this opportunity to present our proposed FY twenty four budget for a second reading. Before I get started, I just do want to thank the board for their participation and feedback during the process. I have discussed the budget with each of the five board members and hope that I have been adequately able to answer your questions. That you've had along the way. There are just a few differences in this version of the budget. Actually, one difference in the numbers from the reading that we did in April to this reading. It is the finalization of the CTE allocation from the state. We did receive that number last week. It was a little bit higher than I had estimated in the original budget. Because it includes as well as a change in employee compensation, a full-time additional faculty member in the radiology technology program. So.
May I ask you a question? Does that mean more students in that program then or?
My, my understanding, and I am not the expert, my understanding is that you can increase the size of the cohort if you have additional instructors. But there's a process you must go through.
Ten to one. Yep.
Yeah.
Ten to one. Yeah.
That's great.
Yes. So very, very good news on that side. Before I got started, I, I just really wanted to check with you in the interest of time. I'm happy to roll through the full presentation. Or, or I am also happy to just address questions that the board has on any of the slides.
Trustee Banducci.
Mr. Chair, may I suggest if, if there are any differences, like if she wants to point out the number with CTE and a couple of those things. That would be fine. And then if we could ask a couple of questions, I, I don't know that we need to go through the whole presentation again. We've seen it, we've seen it individually unless you feel necessary. I think we could move forward on that. I like the, the changes.
Hoping, but you're, just keep going. What, what would you like? Let's see what we get tonight.
Sarah, with, if you're amenable to it, how about giving us the highlights of the, the changes? And then I know I have a couple of questions.
Okay, how, how about if I, I go quickly? I'll, I'll go somewhat quickly, but pause along the way in case you have questions or follow up. Does that work? Okay. So we'll just get started here. So, and I apologize to the public. Hopefully, hopefully that helps a little bit. I apologize. So this is one of the areas where, where there was a small change in the CTE funding. It went in the, in the first reading, we had two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and forty dollars in the budget. For an estimate for the change in employee compensation. With the final allocation from the state, the amount came to two hundred and eighty seven, six hundred and. Two hundred and eighty seven thousand, six hundred and sixty seven dollars, which includes, as I mentioned, change for an employee compensation. And approximately eighty thousand dollars for salary and benefits for the additional rad tech instructor. So that did change our, made a, a change in our total revenue picture. It decreased point four four percent rather than point five seven percent.
And Sarah, that number is reflected under the six point five million under the CTE funding?
Yes, sir, it is.
It's incorporated within that.
So the, yes, this number here, the six point five nine eight six seven. Or six, six, seven is inclusive of that, that two hundred and eighty seven thousand.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So as, as explained in April, this slide basically walks us through the change in the budget from last year to this year. It, it starts with some expense decreases, which largely revolves around the holding open of twenty-one positions. Identified by the administration of the college that we will hold open, hold vacant for the entire year. So that's salary and benefit savings for those twenty-one positions. And there's some other miscellaneous expense reductions that we had. The increases to the budget, there's a series of, of one-time or temporary increases which revolve around costs for. Insurance and the reason for that being one time is that we are going to work on negotiating and seeing if we can get. After a year of experience outside of ICRA, if we can show that. We haven't had any major property issues. Our property insurance is rather high that, that we can prove that we have been good stewards. On, on many areas of our, of our insurance. So we can hopefully negotiate those rates down. In addition, there's an increase for cybersecurity protection and enhancement. That's also a one-time fund. Because we will be asking the state to consider that as a, as a, as a line item. And also as well as potentially initiative across the state. We are not the only school who had a challenge with this last, in, in the last couple of years.
Well, one good thing, we don't have many trees to get blown down next windstorm.
We have forty fewer, I believe, at this point. And then, and then I have budgeted for an increase in legal services just based on the current usage volume. So this represents approximately a fifty percent increase over the current, the current year's budgeted amount. From an ongoing standpoint, we have that CD, CTE. Okay, so I overestimated the amount a little bit. But the, the CTE-funded radiology technology instructor and as well as athletic staffing changes. Those very specifically as noted at the bottom of the slide, it includes turning the golf coach into a full-time benefited. Full-time head coach position. It includes hiring a full-time benefited assistant coach. Who will work with both men's and women's soccer. And it also includes a stipend for. A, a third, a second, sorry, a second assistant wrestling coach, I believe, the second or third. I can't keep track.
Third, Mr. Chair.
Third, thank you, sir.
Yeah, it's a second assistant for mat coverage and tournaments and such. All right, I keep telling you, I'm not going to ask you a question.
It's okay.
Cause you knew the question I was going to ask, but you'd already addressed it regarding the athletics and a little bit on the additions to the coaching.
Yes.
All right. You've heard the discussion about, and we've passed a resolution to move into the new conference or go back into our old conference.
Sure.
How much work are we going to have to do in the budget to try to investigate in August? The grant and aids and the tuition and all the rest of that. How, how much flex do we have or what are we going to need to do to try to get there? Cause I am concerned about properly funding our, the, the athletes and the teams.
So the, the plan that we were working on put us there in, for the fall of twenty-four. So we'll, what we'll do in August is address both twenty twenty-four and the impact if we move now. We'll have to, we'll have to come back for those numbers.
Yeah, I'd like to see both, because I'd still like to encourage us to just to go independent and, and like I said, rip the Band-Aid off.
We'll, we'll look at, we'll look at that full spectrum of, of issues that, that relate to that and bring that back and let the board know. And, and seek input from the board.
And trustee Banducci, Chair McKenzie, trustee Banducci, in, in response to your question. Part of this process would be a detailed accounting and a detailed calculation of, of what it would take. And what it would cost us to do this. And then, and then based on that calculation, the decision, that will help inform the decision.
Right.
Okay. And the student tuition fees, could you highlight that part and course fees? Is there, I think they're staying the same.
Yes, so the tuition rates for students, we, we, we have not changed our tuition rate. It's been six or seven years in a row that we have not changed our, the cost that we charge our, our students. The course fees, there are some changes in course fees because those are based on consumable supplies that are specific to individual courses. And there are some items that have gone up in cost. There are other ones that have gone down because there was required testing that's no longer required. So those, those are, those do change annually and we are asked the instructors to evaluate those annually to make sure we're not charging more. To the students than we need to for their courses.
And, and one of the big changes was a reduction because we were able to hire a coordinator. For our practicum placement, field placements out of CTE funding as opposed to out of course fees. So we were able to deduct that from the course fees because CTE is paying for it.
Yes, sorry. Thank you for that reminder. Yes, we, we were charging for the clinical placement coordinator. We were charging that to students who were participating in the clinical. Rounds with, through health professions and that was being charged as part of a course fee related to their actual course. And we are able to pay for that out of our CTE funding this year, which means that we can relieve. It's, it's about a hundred and seventy-five dollars per student in the clinicals per semester that we were able to reduce.
Okay, well, is there a motion or discussion?
I have a question.
Trustee, trustee Banducci, are you done with your questions? Do you kind of have a?
I had one more. And sir, I just want to be reminded, we've talked about this. I think this was the last year that we were going to be able to absorb the medical insurance costs.
The accident insurance.
Accident insurance.
Yeah, this is the last year. So we have a plan to reevaluate that and, and determine what the actual true cost of that should be. So that will be part of next year's budget discussion.
Okay. Do we have any idea off the top of our heads? I mean, if you don't, that's okay.
We used to be charging eleven dollars per student. I believe it's lower than it used to be.
Okay, I was just curious. All right, thank you.
Okay, so I have a question. We keep getting a question on how we're funding. Staff for the NIC Foundation. Can you fill us in on that?
She's, she's got a slide on that that she'll cover at the end of there.
Yeah, I, do you want me to cover that now before you?
I, I think we can do this. Basically, I, I mean, I can cut to the chase and it's, it's a reimbursement. So anything that the.
If you go to the slide.
But we can, we can go to it.
For everyone following along, if you could give the PDF number, just for. PDF page number.
This is not in the board packet because this was, I was requested to do this just yesterday. So this is in response to inquiries that we've received regarding the foundation. So the fiscal audit for the foundation is included in the NIC audit as a component unit. Even though this foundation is a separate legal entity, it provides benefits exclusively to the college and is therefore required to be included in our audit. We have to, as part of that, we are required to disclose the dollar value of the transactions that occur between the two entities for transparency purposes. The expenses, however, are all reimbursed in full by the foundation. We track them in a pass-through depart, what we call a pass-through department code. So it works just like a grant would work. All the expenses that are incurred. That are related to the foundation that fall on the college's books are reimbursed by the foundation on a monthly basis to the college. There are some college employees who receive partial funding from the foundation. Because the foundation recognizes that the roles that those college employees provide has a benefit to the foundation. And those are listed at the bottom of this slide. So there are the college general fund, the taxpayers of Cootney County do not pay foundation employee salaries. It is, it is processed through our system and reimbursed by the foundation.
So they're treated.
Lean into your mic. Excuse me, yeah, sorry.
So they're, you're, I won't get too much into accounting easier, but it's almost like it's a profit center. With, of zero profit.
Correct.
And so you're just using this mechanism to track costs so that you can audit them and manage them.
Partially also because they, they use the same copier that the president's office uses. And we need to make sure that we are, we actually do this for due diligence purposes to make sure that the college is not absorbing. The copy costs of the foundation. So we track them, we book them to this cost center and the foundation reimburses us for them.
All right, thank you. Trustee Banducci.
Case it's going to get asked later, let's, let's keep going down this trail just a little bit more. We do provide office space for them, correct?
Yes.
We're not charging any rent or anything, are we, for that?
That is correct. We are not.
These are benefited positions?
Yes.
Are we the sole payers for their benefits package, Percy, healthcare, that sort of stuff? Or is that a shared expense?
I do not know the answer to that off the top of my head for.
I've just figured that's going to be the next question if we, because we're talking salary, but then there's additional expenses that goes with each employee. And so the question is, is that a cost share also? Or is that something we're absorbing as the college? That would probably fully answer Mr. Hartman, I think.
And, and the way that this work is fully outlined in an operating agreement that, that is provided, that is signed annually between the college and the foundation. About the reasons why we provide space for them.
Yeah, no, no worries. I wasn't questioning the purpose.
It's, it's fully.
He's asked for the amounts and what do we.
It's, it's split. It's split. Rayel just sent me a text saying it's, it's split. So whatever costs are associated with their portion of the, of their payroll. The benefits are split equally that way as well. So it's not, we don't, we don't pay all their benefits and the foundation just pays salary. It's a split across the board in everything.
Is there a last bullet or are we done?
That, that kind of was, the last bullet is, is what I said was that, that we have college, they are college employees. Who are supported by foundation dollars.
I have one question, but it's a legal question. I'll, I'll take it offline. I don't necessarily want to ask it right here.
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for answering that, Sarah. I was very curious as well. You're welcome.
I would just like to say, I greatly appreciate your time meeting with me. It's a lot of work to make this budget. And I see the lot of work put into it by NIC's administration, you, your staff and. People who work for you. So, and, and all of NIC. So people work. people who work for you. So and and all of NIC. So people work very hard around here. And I get to see it first. It's a privilege to see it firsthand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Is there a motion? I trustee Wagner, did you get your question answered?
My question is answered. Thank you, sir.
Chair McKenzie.
Okay. Trustee Zimmerman.
I move that we approve the budget.
Okay, if I could help you with that wording, and I kind of have a friendly amendment to it, too. If you could say I would, I would personally like to have more discussions specifically on this topic and we'll get get into that hopefully in in the future. But if trustee Zimmerman, if maybe this is an appropriate motion for you to make a motion to approve the FY twenty four institutional budget, including the adoption of FY twenty four tuition and fees and course fees. That's that's what we're hoping to get in there. So that's that's the motion.
Yes, that's the motion I'd like to make.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second, so I would just say this. I don't I don't mean to be I want to say this right, but I would like additional financial representation. There are some topics even from recommendations tonight that I thought were inadequate for like a whole budget compensation and presentation to the board. Couples and we just think we'll work on this for the next couple of board meetings and appreciate your willingness to sit down with me regularly when that's coordinated and depending on how conversations go, have this we'll take it as it comes. So but for tonight, the motion is to approve the FY institutional budget, including the adoption of FY twenty four tuition and fees and course fees. That's before the board. If there's any trustees, I'll give the floor first. Otherwise, President Swain is hoping to say something. Dr. Swain.
I I just say that this is, you know, this has been a challenging process year, lots of things going on. And I and I think many of the board members have brought up questions and issues that not necessarily related directly to the budget as it's presented, but it more about the our, what what we call the recurring reports. And so things that they ask questions about are things that that traditionally, well, I'll say over the last five or six years, have not been provided to the board. So they have not had the ability to make good decisions and feel like they were informed. And so we are working really hard at addressing those concerns overall so that when we get to the budget, it's not a surprise for anyone. Part of that is establishing a better strategic plan, establishing goals and objectives, and and trying to smooth out that process through policy so that everyone gets to this point and they feel good about it and we can move forward in the future. It it was, there were a lot of questions and and many of them were absolutely valid. And and we still, we, Sarah and I and the and the rest of administration still owe the the trustees answers to some of their questions. Some of those answers will come in the form of reports and some of them will be instituted into our those recurring reports that are now part of the 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 board agendas. So I appreciate the the trust and confidence that the board is is placing in us to continue with that effort. And I will, I hope that we can move forward on this.
I would also, if no trustees would like to say it, I would just say, well, one thing this board is working to get is more information. And that's also been reckoned, as you just said, has been recognized by ACC consultants that for for years, not not to fault anybody, but is recurring theme. And we've had ACCD consultants for years be here. And you'll see this reflected in presidential goals. A lot of metrics are going to be starting reported to the board of trustees and goals and objectives tonight. So just want to say that this board and president that we're working together to be transparent in operating decisions and budget information. So thank you for everyone's work in doing that. Is there any other trustees going for a vote?
Well.
Trustee Wagner.
I'm I'm concerned that there's still that obviously we need to get the budget approved. But I'm concerned about the amount of information that I hear that we don't have yet, plus what's gonna happen in August when you come back with a recommendation. Is there some way we can handle both situations? We obviously need the budget approved.
Yep. Well, I think when we come back in August with recommendations, that will be a decision point for the the board to decide if we move which direction we move forward. And and we'll provide, you know, between now and then, we'll have some resolution. We may not have all the numbers, but we'll have better resolution like on the athletic programs and costs associated with that. And we'll be able to address those and how we may be able to pay for them. And so that will be addressed separately and and it and it may or may not affect this budget year. It may affect next, depending on which direction you choose to go.
Right. Is there a way to approve the budget and allow you to begin spending money, but still leave it open? Sure. So that we can modify it at board meetings as we get more information?
I would, I would be careful about adjusting it too many times.
Oh, yes.
But but I think if 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 we make a major, you know, it's like when you get insurance and they say, you know, for life changing, you have a birth or death in the family, there if there's some life changing event that we're going to take on as a college, then we can go back and look at that and 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 modify the budget and adapt it amended.
Yeah, because may I propose, it's getting late, may I may I propose a a motion if we can maybe retract ours? I think we'll get every everyone satisfied. And if if you could bear with me and maybe retract your your motions, I think we could head towards consensus on this topic with a five oh, if you trust me. Otherwise, we can take a vote on what you have right now, or we do friendly amendments if you prefer. If you withdraw your motions, that would just be easiest for everybody.
I I don't understand why you would want to do that. I think.
Because there's another motion, I think that would address.
Well, perhaps the chair wants to put forth an amendment to the motion. And then they could take a vote on the amendment to the motion and then get back to the main motion.
If fellow trustees are unwilling to withdraw their motions and then we'll head that route.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead and amend the.
Motion to amend the existing motion to fully read this to address concerns. So the the wording would be one long paragraph, a motion to approve the FY twenty four institutional budget, including the adoption of FY twenty four tuition and fees and course fees. And then however inadequate financial presentation to the board, and we will work on that next couple of board meetings. And depending on how conversations go, possibly have this budget come again before the board, depending on how those conversations. If maybe not, maybe not, or it's kind of there it is. So.
Mr. Chair, I I think if I could read something perhaps a little more clear.
Sure.
Might be helpful. It looks like you're talking about a motion to approve the institutional budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four tuition and course fees subject to possible changes as need be.
Would that be as new information is presented?
Sure, as new information is presented, sure.
See you.
Mr. Chair.
Board always has that opportunity.
If I, if I may, yeah, the board has the opportunity to approve a revised budget at 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 their discretion. So my suggestion, if you would allow me to do so, would be to approve the budget as presented this evening. And then if it is determined that we need to revise the budget to include any decisions made by the board, that we would do that at that time.
I think that's very reasonable.
Pretty fair. If trustees would like to set a date, it sounds like August or September, we can say say by September. Or we can just leave what we have here. I want to give fellow trustees.
That's not necessary.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary, but I'm asking my fellow trustees because they're the ones I care about.
Make it event driven.
Event driven?
Event driven, not time driven.
Not time.
Because if there's no event change, then we don't need to relook it. But so when an event comes before the board, we'll readjust.
That's great. Are my fellow trustees hearing this? Or do you want me to repeat that for you so everyone can hear?
Greg, for the record, why don't you repeat what Dr. Swain said, please?
Uh, could you speak into the mic?
So I I think if we make it event driven rather than time driven, so when an event occurs that requires a modification to the budget, then we would address that at that time. And so that doesn't tie us to August or September, it it address when when an event occurs. And so everybody knows that that the budget may be amended at at some point in the future. Just kind of a a warning order, let let people know that, but it's going to be driven based on events that may or may not occur.
Well, you were making, looking at making an amendment. What I want, I want to make sure is that the budget gets approved, one.
Yep.
And two, that the staff gets all the
Raises.
Raises and all those things, and we can start spending money, et cetera. And but I I want to make sure that we're in a situation where we can easily reopen the budget.
Well, I I think trustee Wagner, anytime that you want to put the budget back on the agenda, I think the administration is more than willing to accommodate your request and have conversations on your concerns from day here on out. And I think I think you're getting what you want with what we have already with no amended motions.
Okay. It's fine.
If if there's any more misunderstanding, that's why we're having this conversation to address trustee Banducci. Happy?
Certainly.
That's what we're looking for. Okay. Trustee.
We're gonna.
Zimmerman, would you restate your motion if you remember? Actually, I think I have it written here. Motion to approve the FY twenty four institutional budget, including the adoption of FY twenty four tuition and fees and course fees, period.
Yes.
I'll second that.
There's a second by trustee Corkle, which was already seconded. We're there with the floor at the discussion stage. All those in favor of approving this budget, say aye.
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 I hear four votes for aye. And the chair will vote aye to. You have a five oh budget. Congratulations, team. Excellent work. And your budget is approved. Everyone's celebrating tonight.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, team. Thank you, President. Okay, we're moving on to tab two, second reading action, policy two, zero, one, zero, three for meetings.
Right. I've been asked to write a little state, we agreed on a little statement and I put what you that.
Would you like to do that before motions on the floor or?
Yes, maybe.
Okay.
Probably now. That's fine.
Yes, you recognize trustee Wagner.
It's more generalized at this point.
Just speaking of the microphone, please, it it seems to be having trouble on yours.
No, it's me. It's operator trouble. Okay, are we hearing everything fine now?
Yes.
Okay, so the policy subcommittee has dedicated several months, a number of months since I think we started in February, to the crucial task of updating policies that have long remained stagnant. It has been become evident that many of these policies lack clarity and require immediate attention. Given their paramount importance to the college's operations, we are wholeheartedly supportive of this concerted effort as echoed by President Swain, trustee Zimmerman, myself and other fellow trustees. I am pleased to announce that the board is on the cusp of completing the initial rewrite and obtaining approval for new versions of all existing policies. I think if we if we look at where we are right now, I think we only have one left if we get these further ones approved tonight. The the subcommittee is actively compiling a comprehensive list of new topics that will serve as the foundation for developing additional policies and and procedures as necessary. If it's necessary, it is worth noting that despite the absence of a board meeting in July, the subcommittee will convene on July nineteenth to continue with progress. We are putting a lot of time into this and a lot of thought on the part of everybody on the board and on the subcommittee. Once the new policies are formulated, the subcommittee will conduct a thorough review of the existing policies, recognizing that substantial changes are required to some of them. This undertaking will encompass multiple iterations to assure a complete and comprehensive update, primary focusing on clarifications. They're they're just out of date and we need to update them. In light of these developments, we kindly request that all trustees review the existing policies as they are presented to the board and provide specific language suggestions for updates to either Shannon or myself, trustee Wagner. This input will prove invaluable as we embark on the second round of reviewing the existing policies. We sincerely appreciate your unwavering support throughout this this extensive process. Understandably that its completion will require a few more months of concerted effort. So as a kind of a summary, that gives you a status and where we are. And we've just about completed the existing rewriting, the existing ones. We're looking at doing new ones. And so we have this, we've, we have a process set up. Finish a new first rewrite and approval of the existing processes. Start with new topics from a pool that we've set up of a list and develop and submit additional new policies as required. And then after the boards had a chance to look at it and other folks will revisit the existing policies as needed because we think it's going to require some, excuse me, a number of iterations. Okay? And then that's all I have for this topic, except for the specifics that we have here for this one for two dot zero three, I think we are on, right?
Yeah.
Two, two dot zero, one, oh, three meetings, and you can see what we have here and what we're proposing. So if you have any comments on those, let us know. Otherwise, we would like it approved as written. If it and also, excuse me, and also trustee Zimmerman has put a lot of effort in and President Swain. And this is my view of it, but if you want to make some additional comments, those would be welcome.
Well, I will just say that we put in an awful lot of work to each policy. This is the second reading for policy two point oh, one, oh, three. And we reached out for additional recommendations from fellow board members. And as I understand it, we did not receive any, so we're putting this forth again for approval this evening. But I believe we need to have a motion to discuss it.
Right. So I'd like to make a motion to approve two dot zero one dot oh, three.
I second.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
This is to either trustee Wagner or trustee Zimmerman. What we're approving is what we're seeing in the packet with the red lines, correct? That's the final version.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Correct.
So items may be placed on the agenda by the president or board member through president, through the president for publication by the executive assistant to the president. And items should be requested with enough background information so the college may be prepared to respond to ideas and concerns of the board. So that individual paragraph has received much controversy this past year of how agenda items were put forth before the board. And it it I guess I apologize for not providing my input by email. I'm a little hesitant to send in email because that's what board meetings are for is is having discussion on policy before the board. So if if essentially three trustees are talking about something, so that's that's my understanding. And I'm happy to engage with legal counsel to alleviate my concerns. So we can pass this policy, but can you take it as homework to clarify that one paragraph?
Sure. And recognize that we're basically, we've set up our process and we're telling you that we're going to revisit all of these and make people's changes. So there's a whole nother opportunity for any of the board trustees to come in and say, oh, we've used that for a while. We don't like it and we need to tweak it. Okay?
And I'd say also, one of the things that we found as we started going through this is that some some things are duplicated. And some things are, it it there'll be a reference, you know, for more information on that, go to this policy, you go to that policy, there's no reference. It doesn't. And so we have to go back and one of the things we've done. It doesn't. And so we have to go back and one of the things we've done is is go through and and try to make sure that every time there's a cross reference that it's correctly done. And so, so that's why I think we we decided that we're going to make a first pass, go through these, get them updated. And then we're going to find errors or or things that need to be updated again. So there's, it's, it's a necessary process to go through this a couple of times because they've, they've gotten out of date.
Okay, and so I, just for full transparency, I'm going to take it as action, even though you have a policy subcommittee to to fix this paragraph and and take my own the micro committee, I guess you want to call it to.
Why don't you just send it to us?
Chair McKenzie.
So if if legal says that that's legal and not open meeting law violation, then then I will do that.
Chair.
Unless I get that. Yes.
I'd like to hopefully put something to rest for you.
Sure.
We have trustee Wagner and I have worked extensively with Dr. Swain and Shannon Goodrich, but also with our ACCT consultants. And they have advised us that it will help the committee if we have your recommendations in writing and that it is completely proper for you to email those recommendations to Dr. Swain and Shannon. And then they will share it with the others on the committee. And then that way we can actually take your language purposefully and work it into our committee meetings.
I desire that too.
With.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask one quick question? Your concern with that paragraph, is it the word enough? Is that what you're worried about? Is that the word enough is going to get parsed? Where it says items should be requested with enough background information that someone's going to try to parse what is enough background information? Is that your?
I didn't really want to get into this now, but my items may be placed on the agenda by the president or board member. Specifically, the word through the president for publication by the executive assistant to the president. So I just, I guess we as a board and president need to agree like what the wording that means if a trustee can be denied an agenda item or or how, how I guess conflicts where they're just historically, there's a security topic that that I wanted to address in a board meeting. And and it, I was unable to address that.
Okay.
So I have personal experience just at the interpretation and not to belittle, like not to get into it, but.
So what's the word made?
It is, we have six people, seven people sitting here at this board. And and I can name at least four different people who've interpreted this paragraph wrong.
We'll clean it up.
Okay, so here's what I would suggest. We're getting together on July nineteenth. Give us your input and we'll take a look at it and go and go from there. And because that's for the next word.
To get to that. And if I am saying that that's what I want to do, and if I get a confirmation that that's not an open meeting law violation, then that's what I will do. So.
Well, Greg, as legal counsel for the college, I can tell you it's not an open meeting law violation for a trustee or the chair or the president to give input to this committee on a policy. And if you do it in writing, trustee Zimmerman is correct. It's a lot easier to work with. Even if you change the first sentence to make it items shall be placed on the agenda.
I don't want to get all the words.
No, 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 but.
I I shall do that then. That's good enough for me.
My point is that you can always drop something off an agenda and take no action rather than try to.
It's getting late. We're moving forward then.
To an agenda.
We have a motion.
You have two ears, right?
I I do, and I'm.
Okay, I'm just wondering. I'm just checking, just checking.
Okay, we have a motion before the board. I forget who made it and had a second. Help me out.
I made it.
Trustee Wagner, your motion was to approve this policy as written before the board. And seconded by trustee Zimmerman, and I got the name right. So far, all night, two, two meetings in a row. Okay. All those in favor passing this policy, say aye.
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 I hear four votes for aye. The chair votes aye. The motion passes five oh. Note, moving to the next agenda, legal counsel. So how do we want to do this?
So you did both? You did two point oh one oh two. No, not yet. That's. Oh, he's thinking your own legal counsel.
Yes, so I'll, is there a trustee who wants to start the discussion or has a motion or?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that the application period ended last Friday for new legal counsel.
Yeah, if I may maybe give the audience a just situational report on that. So on Friday, so at the last board meeting, the board said go out for RFP. I don't know how many days it was exactly. I'm going to guess about tenish or something. It was since the board, last board meeting to last Friday, let's put it that way. You can look on the internet for when it was. Six, seven, seven open days. And there was how many applicants?
Four.
Four applicants and the RFP closed on Friday. Me, Dr. Swain and Sarah Garcia met on Monday. The whole board was eventually provided the board box and RFP applicant information on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
And where are we?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have in front of me this matrix that evaluates the four applicants.
You do?
I do.
Is that?
That was, that was in the packet.
I do as well.
It was in box. That was, this was in, part, part of the RFQ included the evaluation matrix that would be used to evaluate all the applicants. And that was part of the RFQ and it's in the box folder for everyone's use.
Last I checked, that wasn't, I didn't think it was finalized. Okay, what, what, what page is that? Help me out.
It's a, it's an Excel spreadsheet. It's a separate document. And each member was supposed to evaluate the four applicants.
Well, I did that. I was hoping to see the scoring.
I I did not get a total from the board, so maybe that's. I was not able to tally everything together. Maybe that's if if we don't have that now.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
President Swain, I have to say I'm not sure what you're, what you're referring to. We got the Dropbox. We had the information on the four applicants. I know I reviewed it. My understanding was that was our purpose was to be given the information to review the four and then be prepared tonight to talk about who we would be inclined to have hired as our legal counsel.
What page in the board packet online?
So I, there was some sort of response being requested from the trustees. It was unclear to me. When I looked at it, it just had the box with the information. Then I did see the matrix that was worked on by one of our staff members and I wasn't terribly impressed with it to be truthful.
Could you?
So I am prepared to have a discussion of the four and share a couple of thoughts and then I'll, I'll even make a motion.
Shannon, can?
Do you want to let him borrow mine? Somebody wants to see.
Throw in the.
Well, it is Dropbox. But I don't think everybody can. Can I see that? That's, this is, this is Terry's. That's, that, the, the matrix there is what was submitted was part of the RFQ that the, all of the applicants were notified, this would how they would be evaluated.
This is a neutral committee?
This is just Terry's.
But the.
The scoring, the scoring is Terry's.
Dr. Swain, that's not my scoring. That was like printed off.
Oh, okay, so, so somebody, so somebody else did that.
Who, is that the committee's scoring?
Somebody, somebody put the numbers in the box folder. And oh, some, somebody put their numbers in the box folder, but that's not that someone did that. I don't know who did it, but every, everyone evaluating it should be entering their own numbers in there.
There was a name associated to those. I will not say it, but it is in there and you look in the box and the person that did that. And there's a number of X's, question marks, then there's a few numbers. That's why I was saying it was not okay, a complete evaluation and the matrix was useless how it was presented and how it was given to us. So, so what I did is I went through all the documentation that we see from the four, and I'm still back to my original thought process that I want somebody from Idaho. I'd like somebody local that can get in their car. So there's two of those that are not from Idaho, or excuse me, one of those that's not from Idaho. There's one that's not local. The other two can get in their car, but one of them, by virtue of their current legal situation, is immediately disqualified. So to stay Idaho, local in the car, we're down to one of the four. So. But.
Okay, is there, audience, if you'd, please be quiet. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Corkle, I think trustee Wagner was going to say something.
Oh, okay. Right, yeah, I probably would have a little bit different. I would like someone local, obviously, that's there's no legal issue with one, two, and three, I don't care whether it's Idaho or not. They need to be where they can come to the board meetings fairly soon, no more than say an hour or so. And so those are the requirements I have. And obviously they had to be qualified. And so we go from there.
Okay, do you, do you have a motion, either of you, that you want, or I'm going to get trustee Corkle?
Just like to put my two cents in here. I reviewed all the qualifications of the four applicants. And I've looked at the matrix. And the firm of Stevens Clay out of Spokane, which is certainly close enough to get here in a timely manner. And the firm that does only education work is and has a very reasonable hourly rate is more than qualified to take over as legal counsel for this board.
If if you have a motion, it could go to.
I would make a motion right now to, to hire, to retain Stevens Clay Law Firm as legal counsel for the Board of Trustees.
For the college.
For the college, excuse me.
Okay, is there a second to this motion?
I second it.
Discussion. Okay. That is open for discussion. Trustee Corkle, is there anything else you want to say? It's your motion.
It's, it's on the floor right now. It's open for discussion.
Okay, so this is. This. Oh, sorry.
Chair McKenzie.
Yeah, I'm trying to look at our policy because Dr. Swain, your committee make a scoring matrix and come with a recommendation according to policy.
Right.
Do you have a recommendation for this topic?
Stevens, Stevens Clay was the, was the recommendation from the staff based on their qualifications, their experience and their experience, particularly in higher ed. So, you know, being from Idaho is not one of the criteria. We were really looking for a firm that had significant experience in education law and in representing the institution as, as the general counsel. And two of the attorneys that are on the Stevens Clay team served as general counsel for Eastern Washington University. One of them, in addition to serving as general counsel for Eastern Washington, was also the general counsel for the community colleges of Spokane and Big Bend Community College. So they have substantial experience representing colleges and institutions, not individuals, what I think is really an important aspect. They have seven partners, three associates and two paralegals. The hourly rate for their lead attorney is two seventy five and it's substantially less for their paralegals. So that that would be the, the reasons for making that recommendation. And in looking at the proposal requirements, they have, is a firm that has, that is overall, th- this is the focus of their firm is education law, which is one of the requirements. They include experience serving the public entities, particularly public colleges and universities. They have extensive experience serving public colleges and universities. And then they provided a significant amount of information about other members of the firm that are also maybe available to serve the college and and meet our needs at a significantly reduced rate if you're talking about the paralegal. So that was the reason for the college team evaluating and making that recommendation.
President Swain, did we, did they get references for these folks?
No, we, in, in the, in the RFP process, that's not part of the process. We can go back if that's the board's recommendation. We can, we can go back and and review them. But they, they represent over a hundred school, K twelve school districts in, in the region. And they have, they've been in business for thirty years. So that, I, I mean, that's, I, I think they have the credentials, but we're happy to go back and and do reference checks if if that's the desire of the board.
Can you list the members of the committee that's responsible for the, or the individuals who's responsible for that spreadsheet that's making the.
The, so the individuals, the individuals on the committee are Sir Garcia, Ken Wardinsky, Lloyd, Lloyd Duman and Karen Hubbard. So those are the folks that traditionally have been the greatest users within the college of legal services.
If you could sit down, sir, for securities sake.
So those, those four individuals are the, are the typically the greatest users of, so HR, finance and budget, IT and and then just general education where the, with the provost.
If with recent events.
Good.
Can we have a security gentleman come to the front, please? Okay, so that, that's, and this scoring matrix, all those in individuals are, I, I only, I actually was in the box and I only saw one name associated with that.
One, one individual did it incorrectly and made their changes to the form that everyone is supposed to use. What, what the intent was that you would take that form, download it and then enter your stuff and submit it. And someone just entered their information on the form that was in box.
It, it didn't, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm uncomfortable that, I mean, there's a lot of good work that's been done, right? But I've done lots and lots of hiring hundreds of people. And I'm not comfortable we have all of the information for the board at this point, but we also need an attorney.
We can, we can go back and, at that, you know, if, if there are, if there are outstanding questions that were not addressed in the response to the RFQ, and which are all in box, but if there, if there are substantial questions, we can go back out and and query those and also do reference checks, whatever the board desires, we can, we can take care of that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd, I'd like to get more information.
And there's not a, we don't have a meeting in July, so there's not a, and there's not a lot of activity on campus, so we can hold off on, on that and then make a decision in August if that's the desire of the board.
But also would you like to comment on that?
Well, I have no comment. I have not been involved in this process whatsoever. I'm wondering, Dr. Swain, was Laura Rumpler on the committee? Because probably forty percent of the work that I've done for the college has been on public records requests.
She was, she was not on the committee, no.
Okay. Well, like I said, I'm, I'm just here to try to keep the board out of legal trouble if possible before you hire an attorney. So when you hire an attorney, then I will help the transition as promised.
Okay. We're happy, happy to do reference checks, interview. We have not interviewed these, any of the, I mean, it's typically not part of the RFP pop process to go back and interview folks. The, the idea of the RFQ is that the respondents basically do a one-way interview. They submit as if they were in front of you responding to an interview and they say, here's our best case, why you should hire us. And so it, it, it is not outside of due diligence to go back and check references. But, but in terms of interviewing them, we, we can do that or we can have the board interview them or members of the board if you want to do a subcommittee.
According to policy seven zero one zero four, the administration will establish an ad hoc committee consisting of no less than three college employees in the field covered by the desired service. So that's basically the people who who use the law firm, I think, is, I think, desired service and people who should make the committee. And it sounds like. And it sounds like, um. Sounds like one person may have been omitted in that committee, um. Trustee Waggoner, is there? What? It's been a long night, i- is there a motion, there's a motion before to accept, uh, the Clayton, the law firm. Is, is there an amended motion you have, or is there a way we can narrow it down to two law firms that you, um, are willing to open to? Could, you know, going back and get more information from every, all the RFP applicants is, is. More work than saying, hey, I think these people and these people may, may work. Is, how, is there, do you, do you wanna vote on that motion? I, I don't think you do. Do you, what, what do you want, is what I'm trying to get?
Yeah, I, I, what I want is, what I want is more information on the firms.
So you're not necessarily opposed to, uh, to Cl- Clay?
Clayton, sorry, Stevens, Stevens Clay.
I'm not necessarily, uh. There's a couple folks that, that are local.
Yes.
A- and.
I think the next step, uh, beyond this point would be an engagement agreement. Um, are you, do you want an engagement agreement to see, uh, what it is with Stevens and Clay? Do you want multiple engagement agree, agai- agreements? Do you, do you want multiple references on, on say, uh, two law firms?
Well, I, I wanna know what the contract is going to say.
I think that's the engagement agreement.
Okay, and there's a couple firms there that look good to me, but I don't have enough information at this point.
We've seen an engagement agreement on, uh, the one in Boise, help me with their names.
Uh, the Holland and.
Holland and Hart, you've seen that engagement agreement?
Right.
Um, you, I'm hearing you wanna see an engagement agreement with Stevens Clay.
Correct.
And maybe Boils.
And maybe Boils. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, trust.
Okay, that, that was my recommendation on Monday to come before the board.
Trustee Wagner, were you able to read the resumes that were presented to us?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay. Just wanna be sure.
Okay.
You know, uh, Mr. Chair, if I could, um, I, I recommend the board, uh. Try to procure some proposed engagement agreements from the several firms for inclusion in the matrix of evaluation because. It comes down to the contract, this is, this is Idaho, so a good marketing campaign. Does not make the contract that binds the parties. And so, uh, there are certain terms that the board might want in there, like an at-will section or, um, some other thing. And you just don't know what an attorney will or won't provide unless you provide a fee agreement.
Sure, so we can do that, I think our.
And, and that's, I think, it boils down kind of my concern, I see the good marketing. But I also know from experience that that may not be what you're getting sometimes.
Okay, and I think, uh, also if query the, the RFP applicants, uh, for, for the. I'm hoping maybe we can narrow it down to, well, I guess we have three, um, uh, with the. Prior experience, uh, related to insurance, I know NIC's insurance is very expensive right now. And, um, I think, uh, if we could ask, uh, these insurance companies, uh, specifically on, on prior, uh, experience, uh, dealing with, uh. Expensive insurance, institutions with expensive insurance situation, so specifically that question, I think is worthwhile asking. Um, so, is there any? Um, the motion before the floor is to accept Stevens Clay. I, I think we're about to vote on that motion unless people want to hear other people's concerns, withdraw their motion in, in. Uh, or make a friendly or emotion, trustee Wagner. Um, if something I can help you through, if you would like to head then that direction, trustee Banducci, you haven't weighed in, um, for motions or trustee Zimmerman?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion on the floor and there's been a second, I'd like, and it's been a lot of discussion, I'd like to call for the question.
We can. Okay, hearing no other motions, the motion or, or discussion, the, the motion before the board is to accept, uh. Stevens Clay Law Firm, uh, as, uh. Help, help me.
So, so I would say subject to, um, uh.
Subject to a fee agreement, uh, being presented to the board, uh, sole fee agreement being presented, uh, to the board. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
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 Okay, and the board, the chair does not vote on this one. So that is a two-two, the motion fails. If trustee Wagner, you don't make a motion before the, uh, board. I'm going to propose the same motion and I think it would pass again, so if you have a motion that you want, speak up. Or we're gonna move this college forward with legal counsel. I'm hearing what you're saying in this board meeting and I think you want engagement agree, we already have one from Holland and Hart. I think you want an engagement agreement from Stevens Clay and I think you want an engagement agreement, uh, from Colton Boyle. And I would kinda like my more information, uh, question.
Agreed.
Uh, provided, uh, specific. Do for the college to engage with these three firms and how they can tailor their services and maybe give us like an in-person, uh, uh, sales pitch, do you want that, or do you just?
I, I don't need a sales pitch, I just want some more information, the, the process that I'm used to using and hiring. Is the resume, which is essentially what you have here, you guys have done a lot of work and we need to get something done here. But I, I, I wanted to hear from their customers and I would like the engagement agreement for those two or three people, firms.
Okay, trustee Banducci, you're being recognized, I don't have a motion before the floor yet.
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. You, uh, asked if possibly we could narrow down, um. For the purposes of. The request from trustee Wagner, maybe we could narrow it down to the. Mr. Boils and the, uh, law firm out of, uh, Spokane.
I, I could.
Too local.
Definitely see the logic in that motion.
Chair McKenzie.
Uh, I think that would be essentially ruling out the, the third very viable option of Holland Heart. And, and, um, I'm gonna make a motion that the, uh, college engage with Colton Boyle and.
Chair McKenzie.
Just, just a second, trustee Zimmerman, uh, the, the motion is, I think trustee Banducci is trying to make for this board. Is to, for the college to, uh, engage, uh, Stevens Clay and Colton Boyle. Uh, come before the board within each engagement agreement and ask trustee McKenzie's question. Is that the motion that you, uh, desire to be made?
Yes.
Stay so moved.
So moved.
So moves as trustee Wagner, okay, is there a second on this board from the other end of the table or trustee Banducci himself?
Oh, I will second, and I think trustee Zimmerman has something she wanted to say.
Okay, it is on the floor for discussion, trustee Zimmerman.
Thank you, Chair McKenzie, um, some information has come to me and, uh, very, this afternoon, right before the meeting and. I, uh, I have grave concerns about Boyle's Law, um, in Idaho Press Club versus McGeekin.
Okay, we're, we're, we're not gonna get into.
Court.
No, we're not gonna get into that drink.
Boyle's was repeatedly admonished for filing frivolous claims.
More information, trustee Zimmerman.
The judge.
Will you please?
Stating he could sanction Boyle's under Idaho Rule of Civil Procedure Rule eleven.
This will all.
And awarding attorney fees to the opposing party.
Give it to the president, it will all be before the board and we can all get the information.
Cases of attorney misconduct.
Give it to the president, I don't mean to silence you, give it to the president, make it part of the packet going before the board with, uh, proper information.
And it will be more thorough because he definitely should not be qualified.
Okay, thank you for working with your president to get this board actionable information.
So if, 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 may I, if, uh, if, if, if board members have specific questions, I, I understand what, uh, trustee Wagner is asking, I think. Um, so I think we can pursue that soliciting, um, engagement agreements and, um. Is, is, what else was it that?
I, I wanna know, uh, each firm's, uh, experience helping institutions with higher, uh, insurance, high insurance expenses.
Mike, what did, Mike, what, what, what did you want, make sure you're, you're saying what?
Yeah, what, what information do you, uh? You, you wanted references, we wanted references?
Yeah, I want, I want references.
Okay. Um, insurance negotiations. Engagement letter, right?
Yeah, and engagement letters, so I understand exactly what we're agreeing.
Insurance negotiations.
Years of experience.
Uh, years of experience. In, in higher ed, is that? Or?
In hi- experience in higher ed. A number of years of experience in higher ed.
Or how about years of experience for public institutions?
I think higher ed is probably more specific to the college.
How about both?
Mr. Chairman, um.
We can do both.
This, this college is under show cause right now and it's under show cause because of poor governance. And, um. Even, no disrespect to Colton Boyle, I don't even know the guy, but I looked at his resume, he doesn't have any experience in this, none. None, none, none at all, and for him to even be considered, you know, to even go and ask him, what is your experience in higher education? He doesn't list any. And this, Stevens Clay, they have over a hundred K-12 schools. And higher education experience and we need to get references?
I, I, I'm happy.
I would just like to comment that the Stevens Clay RFP proposal was extremely well done, I was impressed myself. And what, uh, trustee Corkle said with regards to Stephen Clay, your initial motion, sir, it has great logic to it. So I think, and for this board, uh, to make an informed decision is what we're trying to get to, um, is, is this, this information, uh, coming with, before the board. Um, as was discussed, um.
I, I will collect this information and report back to the board.
Thank you, sir, and hopefully sooner than later.
Chair McKenzie.
Trustee Banducci.
Hey, Brad. I hear what you're saying. But trustee Wagner, one of ours, has asked for some information, in particular the engagement letter, so. In my opinion, out of respect for his request. We honor that. And that's why we allow this to, to go how it's moving forward.
I think we're, there is, I don't necessarily wanna advertise this cuz I, I hopefully may be wrong in this category. We, we may be having one more special, uh, board meeting and we could possibly, uh, have a consensus to have, uh, at that special board meeting. Uh, this topic, uh, addressed in the open session and another one, uh, possibly in executive session if the college needs. I think that whole, I think that everyone desires to resolve, uh, this lawyer situation as promptly as possible. And is, is that something that all trustees are open to if, uh, we can get this information tight?
I, I, I must say that, uh, the, the information submitted by the four applicants, if that isn't enough to satisfy this board.
I completely.
I don't know what other information could possibly come forward that would sway somebody's vote.
Entertaining a candidate like Boyle's Law is like a deja vu from December or a bad dream or a nightmare.
It, sure. You may not.
Mr. Mr. Chair, um, it sounds like there's a motion and, uh, President Swain has agreed to get. Uh, references, which I took to be testimonials. Um, and Banducci wants, uh, engagement letters for evaluation, I think that's proper, and then you were talking about something about insurance.
Uh, Mr. Mackamore.
Wagner, I'm sorry.
Trustee Wagner has made.
We, we didn't have that last time and, and we went with Holland and Hart and I wanna make sure we're very thorough this time, okay?
Okay, so that, that's the motion you've been having discussion about and Dr. Swain has agreed to get those items.
Head nod from Shannon that you got that in writing and you're good to go for the.
I, I don't think we need a motion, I think we, this is.
Yeah, we don't need a motion.
The board's requesting additional information that we will collect and provide. And, uh, I, I, I just say on the, if we're gonna have a, a special meeting. Just remember that the reason for moving this meeting from the end of the month to today. Was that the rest of the month is pretty tightly booked for everyone, so, um, just give everybody lots of notice. Um, I, I have a wedding, my son's getting married and Brad's got stuff and there's a, there's a lot going on, so.
I, I, I think we're all trying to avoid that and that's, uh, one of the reasons why you and I met on Monday to. Try and, uh, and to, to try and get action on this and, um, here we are. Jay, uh, going to, I'm gonna move quicker on this. So, a- actually, we're gonna jump to. Seven, the tab five, so Action Policy seven zero one zero four, Continuous Professional Service Contracts. Uh, there is a draft that I'm, um, giving to the president to refer to the Senate according to the policy on policies. On, specific to this RFP process, uh, to, um, and I have a motion if I can find it here.
Has, has, have, have the other members of the board seen this?
Uh, no, but I'm hoping the Senate, uh, does see it before it comes back to the board to get stakeholder input. So the motion is to direct the president to refer this policy, uh, suggestion to the Senate. And actually, did you, did you give it to all of us earlier?
Uh, yes, I did, I passed it out.
We've all given, received the same information, so a motion to direct the president to refer this policy suggestion to the Senate. In accordance with the policy on policy modifications and come back before the board with constituent and stakeholder feedback, um.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
All right, we were given two documents by Mr. Mackamore. One of them looks like it's redlined, is that the updated version then?
That is showing the changes to the original and the non-redlined is the newish version, uh, with. As it would come back before the board if there was no changes from stakeholder input.
So this is the clean version with the red lines incorporated.
The clean version going to the Senate through the president?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. It's getting late, let's move forward, all those in favor, is there any discussion? All those in favor of, uh, motion to direct the president to refer this policy suggestion to the Senate?
Who made the motion?
I'm, I'm making the motion, it's getting late.
All, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll second your motion.
Second, trustee Banducci, thank you, uh. Go into the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 I hear four votes, the chair's gonna make it five oh, um, and the motion passes. Okay, that is, get that one check mark in there. Legal counsel, first reading, policy two zero one zero two, responsibilities, duties and standards of good practice. Trustee Wagner or Zimmerman, looking to you. Trustee Zimmerman, cuz Wagner had it last time first.
Sure, I'll start if you like, do you wanna say something, trustee?
Another thing.
Go ahead.
Trustee Wagner, forgive me, team.
Yes, they've been putting me, making me work.
Good, good.
Lots of it.
Well.
Okay, so, um.
Your, your, your mic.
Lean into your microphone, please.
There, we're, we've been doing lots of work and I got assigned to do these little preamble, so. Uh, just going to make some comments when you see it, the, the policy is highly rewritten. And the problem was, uh, so a policy two dot zero one dot two, in particular necessitated, necessitated. An extensive rewrite due to the intertwining of statutory and policy requirements, which led to repeated confusion for the reader. They had to go back and split it all out every time they went to read it. Um, the subcommittee has indicated significant efforts to rectify this issue. The primary objectives of this rewrite were as follows, separate the statutory requirements. From policy requirements, clearly delineate, uh, board roles and update information as necessary. Uh, we will review the new version of this policy during the July nineteenth meeting. Um, you're, we're just doing a first reading tonight. Additionally, we will be separating the best practices and board ethics. Into two distinct documents at that meeting to enhance their effectiveness, we need the best practices and we need to strengthen ethics. Given their significance, combining them is no longer deemed appropriate.
Trustee.
Trustee Zimmerman, do you wanna make some additional comments?
Sure, I just kind of, um, add, add a little bit to that, so everything was really shuffled together. We've separated them out for ease for the trustees to understand and to use for their policy and to refer to. Also, I'd like to draw your attention to, um, responsibilities, section A, part two. To employ legal counsel and other professional and non-professional persons and to prescribe their qual- qualifications, that is in Idaho code. And we have added that, so I just wanna point that out that that is there. And we will be developing a code of ethics that is, um, not part of this policy, as you can see, this is a really big policy, we're going to break that out and make that a developed, a newly developed policy. Um, but instead, we have elected to continue to hold on to the standards of good practice, which are on page five of six. Uh, there's a lot going on in here. Uh, there's a lot going on in here, so I invite you to really um, dive into it. You've got some time. Uh, we meet again in the middle of July, I think the nineteenth, so please offer your written comments um, to Shannon and President Swain. And we'll be happy to, to look at those and review them.
Mister Chair.
Trustee Banducci and then we'll go to.
Uh, Terry, this is to you or, or Mike. I, I noticed on page two, um, you, you've kind of got a placeholder for a header. Do you guys have something in mind for that? Are you looking for random suggestions from us or what?
Yeah, we had, we had an idea, we just didn't get to update it.
I'm kind of kidding about random, but.
It's a.
Board policy requirement.
Yeah, board policy require, go ahead.
I think it was.
I've, I've got it.
Statutory responsibilities, so it's a complement to that, which is board.
What I wrote down in my notes was board policy requirement.
Yeah, that's me too.
Okay, okay.
And, and I think Shannon did accept all changes and sent it out to you. So that again, you have a clean copy. I, I find it very difficult to read the red line stuff.
Right, and, and she did get that to us and give it us a copy up here. So I have that, thank you.
And, and I wasn't trying to waste your time with that question, I just didn't know if you were soliciting from us or if that was for you guys internal, you know, work you were doing as the, as the uh.
Something we should have cleaned up prior, but thank you.
No, no problem. I won't give you suggestions if you got it, can, you got it.
You know, it's a lot of work being a trustee and I'm seeing you guys put in double the work, so.
Yeah, just, just to point out, we had ACCT training last night. And then at nine o'clock this morning, we all started working on, in a Zoom meeting on the policies. And in between those, we had to do prep work for all of this, so we've got, and then we're gonna be out of here late tonight, so. It's uh, a lot of work.
Yeah.
But it's gotta be done.
And we're not even paid, but it's fun. It's all for the students. Okay. Is there, so we're on tab three, policy two zero one zero two, responsibilities, duties and standards of good practice. Is there a motion before the board to adopt revisions um, to policy?
I think it's just a first, first reading.
Okay, we can take a first read. Is there any input? We moving on?
No, we can take input and we're gonna cover it again on, we're gonna work together offline on July nineteenth, so anybody wants to give us input, we'll take it.
I'm moving on to the next agenda item. Discuss suggested new board governance policies to be developed.
Okay, uh, because of the way we combined things, I actually did that in the preamble.
Good.
So we can skip that. Unless uh, the other two folks wanted to cover it, okay?
Great. Moving to president's goals.
So I, um, I have the original ones and, and uh, the chair provided a, um, an edited version.
We'll, we'll take a break after this one, how's that?
Okay, I, so I, I, I've, I'm very comfortable with the original. I haven't had a chance to look at the proposed changes yet. And I'm not sure that the other trustees have. And so the um. I, I don't, I don't know how to proceed with this. I would, I would recommend maybe that we adopt the originals with the um. And leave open as, as we have with many things tonight, the opportunities to uh, adjust and um, include further details going forward. So if, if that's.
I'm, I'm happy, so a lot of them are actually quite minor, um, but they just kind of have like extra metrics um, that I'd like to see reported to the board um, and dates to go with them. Like for example, uh, I noticed, so like recruiting, enrollment, retention, it didn't have persistence management. And, and so they just added that, it's the exact same thing except they just added the persistence management. So it would, it's a.
Right.
It says the same thing, develop, monitor and evaluate, I put student success metrics focused on recruitment, enrollment, retention and persistence efforts. In order to increase the awareness and a positive visibility of oppor- opportunities at NIC improvements in enrollment process and overall efficiencies. And then I, I added uh, this part, so there's enhancing student success and retention rates to ensure students meet their academic objectives. With demonstratable improvements by April first, twenty twenty four. And I just put that date in there because it's April first, twenty twenty five. And uh, it's almost a year from now, um, if we want to change the date for all these. But we're trying to put, say, uh, metrics that we're tracking and, you know, demonstrable improvements by April twenty. So that's the first bullet point. It's pretty much identical, just adds in persistence, which is a pretty key uh, thing.
I, so my was retention or persistence are, are somewhat related.
No, I could explain the difference. So retention uh, is if a student, you know, comes to NIC and uh. Is a student and even graduates from NIC. Persistence means like a student comes to NIC to be a nursing student. And then they actually graduate as a nursing student. So it's not only that you're recruited, enrolled, and, but they return, but they also persist. Uh, to achieve their academic goals or licensure. So these are uh, metrics, there's metrics that just account for persistence.
I, I, I understand, um, if, but if the, if the individual's academic goals change. Um, so I, I just think we.
Well, that's, that's the exact same thing. It's because it relates to the recruiting and we're, we're trying to uh. It's, it's, persistence is, is, is a pretty important metrics. And honestly, the, the, the peer review team, it, it kind of aligns with the peer review team because they. Uh, this is part of accreditation is, is.
I, I understand.
Leadership's knowledge of like metrics to report for the board. So it's, it's the boards, the board just wants these metrics and I, I, for this bullet point. Um, we guess we can take it bullet point by bullet point if we want.
Let me, I would prefer that we, that I have an opportunity to review these and um, and digest them a bit. Um, because one of the things we, I, I had, I had metrics in the original one, so I had goals within objectives in that. And as we were developing, as we took these out because we wanted to just focus on board, or sorry, on, on president's goal. So I, I, I just need some time to really digest these and see. So I have, I have no objection to having metrics. I just, the, the, the goals are, were standalone and so adding metrics uh, at this point.
You, you, you already have met, you, you had develop, monitor and evaluate success metrics like in there already.
Right, but I haven't, I didn't put the metrics in. So, so give me a chance to, to digest this and come back with. After I've had a chance to digest it and I, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Right, well, I'm trustee Wagner.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I, when I went through the uh. Your original ones, I was concerned the metrics weren't there. I'm used to that being there. And so if we can get that and get it.
Remember when we did that, I, I, I had them included and, and the ACCT guys said, take those out, let's just focus on the goals first. And so we focus on the goals and then the next step is to come back with metrics. And so I, I, I'm happy to do whatever, I, it just, adding it at this late stage, I, I need time to.
I remembered that way as well, so.
Yeah.
This, we're, we're looking for quantifiable, like. Things uh, that, so I've, I've written these so, so we can monitor that. So, so that's, that's the first one. So the first one, we have accreditation, work with board in college. To ensure reaffirmation of accreditation and return to good standing with NWCC before April twenty twenty one. I think we're all in agreement on that, yes?
Right, but I.
I'm gonna bundle these two together then. So then this uh, next one for student success. Can we adopt my proposed uh, bullet item I have on the page before you? Yes, sir?
Mister Chair. Forgive me for a moment, a little bit of a digression for what the conversation is going, but I, I have a question and I'm gonna direct this to Mr. Mackamore and it, this is. Kind of an overarching question. We're struggling here to try to maybe pull this out right now so we can approve it versus approving later. I guess my question is, is this something that actually has to be approved at a board meeting? Or is this not something that we can just come to consensus and share? It's not really a decision of the college, we're not budgeting for money, we're not buying something, we're not changing a policy, we're not adding a sport, we're not doing anything. So do we have to make, and I guess I'll ask Art this, is this something we have to do right now on this? Or is this a sort of thing that we can just work offline and let uh, Nick have some time to review this and then. Pass it around by email or something.
I think, I think going to NWCCU.
Since uh, Mister Chair. This, this is the type of thing that is the college's policy on evaluating the president.
Right.
And so it is a public policy. It does have to be done in an open meeting situation.
Be clear on this, if we needed to.
So thi- this is the time to have inputs is, is what I'm saying and I'm, I'm doing that. And so it's pretty much the identical, it just adds a metric that's really important to me. And I, I think it more better aligns with accreditation standards and best practices. And so uh, I think this bullet point as I've proposed it. If we can have board consensus to adopt it or we can put it to a motion, so is there?
So the, the challenge is for the board evaluation policies, these have to be mutually agreed upon goals. And so mutually means the board and the president. And so agreeing to them now by the board does not meet the, the objective or, or the, the, the policy. They have to be mutually agreed upon. So pushing this through tonight does not meet that standard. They don't have to, they, they would not be mutually agreed upon because we have to agree on them.
Mister Chair.
Well.
Mister Chair, I, I make a motion that we table this tonight.
Mm-hmm.
I second it.
So.
I call for the vote.
We, we can do that. We're going to NWCCU and it would be wonderful to be able to say we've given our president presidential goals.
But he needs time to review them. They're extremely important to him and, because it drives his whole agenda for the whole year.
It's a work in progress.
So, so there's, there's two ways to look at that is, one, as a board entity, this is saying what we want. And then hoping, and basically saying, come back to us with saying, uh, what, what do you want and improve these uh, better? So I think we can have that discussion. And, but basically as a board, this is, we're saying this is what we want. And um, President, you can provide us feedback on, on uh, why we should not want this.
I, I, so I would just say that I think the, the policy would be to have mutually agreed upon goals that are then approved in a public session. And so um, since these are not mutually agreed upon. I don't think it moves the agenda forward to approve them now without them being mutually approved. So um, that, so that's the challenge and, and I, and I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing that yours aren't good or, or, or aren't valid. I just say, I, I haven't had a chance to really look at them and they were presented to me during the meeting tonight. And, and I, I, I don't like agreeing to things that are going to be part of my, or the essence of my evaluation. With two minutes to look at them. I don't think that's fair and I don't think it's.
We had a break of ten minutes. Why don't we, why don't we take a break and come back in fifteen minutes? We can talk about this.
I, I, I'm, I'm not.
Chair McKenzie.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Uh, thank you. We have put in as a board, an awful lot of effort and hours and hours with ACC training and board training. And we went at great length to develop a draft. And we've had.
This is the first time at a public session.
At a public, public session, that's correct, but we've been aware of it for quite some time. And to put this proposal on our desk here in the middle of a meeting and expect us to digest it. And come to an agreement is unreasonable. So I believe we should table this as trustee Banducci has already recommended.
All right. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
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 Is that four votes did I hear? I hear three at least.
Aye.
Four votes, it's, the motion is tabled. Um, all opposed? The chair votes to oppose and it's four one. So moving on to the next agenda item.
Think it's.
Website.
Board evaluation.
Uh, actually, we, we have a personnel matter, address urgent uh, personnel line, which is the new agent. Trustee Banducci.
Mister Chair, um, I did see an item here, discuss suggested new board governance policies to be developed was uh.
We did that and it was kind of tabled with the above agenda item.
Okay, I want to make sure we have that to trustee Zimmerman and trustee Wagner satisfactorily.
They spoke.
Doing the work. We've got everything we need for you two on that.
Yes.
Okay. Just, you guys are doing it, so I want to make sure we're helping.
Okay, I'm gonna speak to the board evaluation tonight and then I think we're gonna uh, take a break. And then we're gonna talk uh, two more agenda items after that, if I can. Wrong document. Yeah, the board at last night's training was reminded of areas where we need to improve. And that impacted our own uh, consideration in uh, board goals that were uh, we saw modeled before us. And that we're drafting um, in our minds right now. So that's the latest uh, board evaluation and we look forward to um. Improving that. Would you, let's take a break and we shall reconvene at ten oh five, ten oh five. Everyone, we're coming back together. If you would, uh, please find your seat. We'll find ourselves on the agenda. Okay. I think, um, I'm going to go to action, uh, president's evaluation. This will be quick. We just talked about. So, uh, I need a motion, uh, to initiate a president's evaluation for the time period for which Dr. Swain, uh, was acting president. Since his return as acting president is what I meant to say, as similar conducted in October spanning the next two weeks for consideration of the next executive session. Is there a motion or someone willing to make that motion say so moved? So I shall say that again, uh, a motion to initiate a president's evaluation for the time period, uh, for, since Dr. Swain's return as acting.
Maybe I could add some emphasis.
Sure.
Just like, so, um, back in October, the board, uh, approved a quarterly evaluation system that would be administered by ACCT. It's not the same, uh, folks that are, are, are consultants, but ACCT, um, does those kinds of things. So we contracted with them to do that quarterly. And then obviously I was on administrative leave for a while. So now that I'm back, um, it, it, it really is only a portion of the evaluation that is per policy, which would be that, um, ACCT evaluation plus the board goals. That would be, um, a, 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 a proper evaluation. And so this is just going to be the ACT, ACCT, uh, survey kind of instrument that will provide a partial look, but it, it, it would be informative for, for me and the board, um, as we start to do a better job moving forward. That would include the same kind of ACCT survey, but combine that with the, um, the president's goals that we were addressing earlier. Is that?
That's wonderful. Thank you. Uh, so is someone who could say so moved?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Um, is there a second before?
Second.
I'm going to give that to trustee Wagner because I saw his head moving, but it might've just been biased of facing that. There's, forgive me, uh, trustees and everyone. Okay. So this motion is second and shall state the motion to initiate a president's evaluation for the time period for which Dr. Swain's return as acting, uh, president as similar conducted in October spanning the next two weeks with consideration of the next executive session. So, uh, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
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 I hear three ayes. Trustee Banducci, you're.
I was still waiting for discussion. I had a question. So I guess I'll say aye.
Forgive me. It's late and I think you're outvoted.
I just want to know how it's going to be conducted.
So the same, same way in October, I think ACC is online form. You fill it out. Okay. And, uh, all those opposed say nay. The chair doesn't vote nay. So the chair doesn't even vote. So four zero, good to go. All right. Moving to. We, we're going to actually save that one more thing. So, uh, personnel action to the, uh, uh, modified agenda. Um, personnel matter, address urgent, uh, personnel matter. I have a motion. Forgive me.
This was the amendment to the agenda. Yes.
I'll make the motion to authorize the board chair to look into the practicality and decision to hire a neutral workplace investigator into an urgent personnel matter. Uh, if there's, I made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Wagner, um, we're going to save discussion and is there, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
I hear four votes, um, in the aye and none opposed. The chair doesn't vote. Uh, moving to the last one, new website launch trustee, or Dr. Swain, would you like to introduce Ken Wadensky?
Sure. Um, one of the things that, uh, wh- when I first got here, I looked at the website and, um, if you, if you click on programs, uh, the dropdown menu contained, I don't know, just over a hundred, maybe a hundred and three different programs, many of them with very similar names. But if you clicked on those programs, um, it would take you in different directions and it was really unwieldy. And it made it very difficult for, um, students that were trying to get into a specific program. It made it very difficult for them to find their way. And so we started this conversation back in, um, I, I guess in August. And, um, there are, you know, we, we have a web, they had a website, um, contractor that was already working on something. Um, so Ken and, uh, and Laura have been working on building the backend, building the images, getting all the information up. And we had hoped to have this up and running by December. And, um, so now it's, we're right on schedule. I'm waiting for the laughter. Um, but, uh, so, so now, you know, now it's June. So, uh, we're about six months late. But, um, anyway, so, uh, here you go with, uh, Ken and Laura showcasing it. Um, what you see up here is the, is the current website. Um, and then they'll talk you through, um, some of the changes and, and, uh, they won't take too long.
Laura Rempler.
We will be bright, be brief and then be gone. So we can all go home. But I just wanted to acknowledge and say thank you, Chair McKenzie, trustees, President Swain, Council McCumberg and all members of the North Idaho College community. Ken and I are here to preview the launch of the new website. And this has definitely been a labor of love spanning many, many years. So we have been working on this side by side, literally for years. Um, have had several hiccups along the way, including something called COVID and a few other things and changes in, in staffing and such. And I know it's been a labor of love for all of you to sit here all night. So we will continue to move on and share just a couple of highlights and excited to preview the brand new website. So going back several years ago, we hired a company called M. Stoner. They actually came out here on campus and met with so many different key stakeholders. And we did a discovery process. And so I went back and I looked at our original goals and objectives. And those are still the same today. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of those and Ken's going like, what? But yes, he doesn't remember that long ago. We've both gotten gray hairs with this project. But our goals and objectives of this effort, um, after that discovery process of listening to all of our stakeholders and deciding who we wanted to be and what we wanted to be with our new website. Where it was an effort to redesign the site to make it attractive and provide easily accessible information to all types of prospective students and community leaders. And the website serves as the college's key and chief marketing vehicle. So we're excited to be able to launch that to support the goals of broadening North Idaho colleges' reach, raising awareness and framing NIC as a destination rather than a default. And the new website will tell the college's story with clarity, confidence, consistency and conviction. And together, this was the team that came together that has been working so hard on this for many, many years. Together, we will strive to create a website that's easy to navigate, information rich, visually appealing and emotionally evocative. And I just wanted to say a few thank yous. Yeah, I'm the.
Might be some marketing in there.
Yeah, I'm the front person. He's the backend guy.
She said she'd be brief.
I'm being brief. I'm being brief. I'm being brief, I'm being brief. I just have to say though, a few thank yous to especially the unsung heroes. On our team, Amy Huganen is our web manager, and Sean Harrington is our web specialist, AKA, I call him the backend guy. And we keep pushing the envelope with our current site, and Ken's gonna talk about the history, a tiny bit of our current site and why we are changing, and what we're doing with a new CMS and a whole new backend model. But we have been pushing the envelope of what we've been able to do with the current site over the last couple of years, and we received accolades from the NWCCU Peer Panel Evaluation Report about the transparency and the information sharing that we currently have on our website. And so everyone in the communications and marketing team has been doing a huge lift from, you will see when Ken launches the new site and shows you, from photography to videography to graphic design elements, visual presence and copyrighting, every single person has contributed to this. And I cannot not say thank you though to our information technology department. Jeremy Seda is our IT accessibility coordinator, and my final thank you before I turn it over to my partner in crime of many years working on this project. In my 25-year career in the public service sector, working for local government entities, K-12, higher ed here now, cities and counties, this is my third, if not my fourth maybe, I've lost count, of a complete website overhaul. And never have I worked alongside an IT department, sometimes communications and marketing and IT but heads. From day one, Ken and I were lockstep on our vision for this project. Ken Wardinsky is one of the most solid individuals I've ever had the privilege of working with. He is strategic, he is smart, he's dedicated, and he has that ethos of we will find a way. So thank you, Ken, for walking alongside this journey with me, and I'll turn it over to Ken.
Now I gotta drive crooked here, hang on. All right, so as Laura said, so I'm entering my eighth year at NIC in July, it's like a blink away. Eight years ago when I got here, I did the same thing that President Swain said and said, let's get rid of this website. That didn't happen. One of the things about our website currently is it's very button-heavy. A lot of people are used to it, but for most people on our current website, the way you find something is simply search for it, and we've had that feedback for a long time. So what I'm gonna do is, in the interest of time, I'm gonna show you what the new site looks like, talk briefly about the navigation. I want to show you the student experience of finding a program and the differences between what we see today and what the new students will see, and then the same thing for current student resources, because if you look at the current student site today, I call it Yahoo 1996, really. So our new website, the new layout is this, with stop-motion video. We have the high links at the top for current student, my Nick and alumni. We've categorized things for education and training, admissions and aid, student life and athletics, and the scroll bar will chase you as you go down the site so that you don't miss anything. We've gotten rid of links and pieces of links with pictures and storyboards with additional links to get you to the categories you need, and the whole idea was really starting to bundle things about learning opportunities in different ways, affordable learning, because that's important to us for financial aid and all those different scholarships we have, and kind of just using this front page as really that invitation to NIC. Today, if a student's interested in a program, for instance, they would come down to instructional programs, and this is where you get Dropbox Nightmare, where you have to pick one of our many great programs at NIC. I'm going to choose accounting assistant just because it's the first one, and most dropdowns you choose the first one, right? So if I go to that page, we actually have spiced these up quite a bit, where we do have a graphic about things in a direction video, but it kind of gets lost in a few different ways. Today, and the new site when we launch it, not today, but they would go into the education and training. We have redefined our academic programs into what we call our interest areas, which are simply collections of similar programs. So arts, communications, humanity programs, business administration, our healthcare programs, manufacturing trades, they're simply grouped together. So if I'm going to, is John still here? I'm gonna pick on John, yeah. John's physical therapy assistance, I'm gonna go to healthcare. Within the healthcare, it's going to list all of these different areas by tile. Now, if I know the program I want, I can simply start typing it, but we've also created a system on the side here that's more like an Amazon, where you can choose a career in technical or a transfer degree program. You can sort by year of time of completion for one-year certificates or two-year degrees, the degree type that you're interested in, and the location that you wish to take it at. So this just gives you a little bit better way to actually start narrowing down where these programs offerings are. I'm going to just start typing. And you can see that this starts to-
You have to spell it right though, Ken.
I do have to spell it right, it's late, and I'm an IT guy.
Got a Y.
And I'm doing content on website stuff.
Yep. He's, he's used to autocorrect. Give me an A.
We'll just come down to PTA. The new page is what we've incorporated as a hero image on here. One of the things that we just recently added that I really am kind of nice and excited about is putting our tuition and fees button on our programs, because we really want to be transparent about these costs for everything, right? And if you've gone on our site before or even other high education sites, you almost have to search for tuition and fees to get where that is. We're just putting that right in front for everybody to go. The calculate your cost section is the federal financial aid calculator. So that turns, takes basically what your earned income is and things like that to try to calculate what your overall cost is gonna be, the factors and cost of living. That's a requirement by the federal government to actually have that on there. We've incorporated that for every single program that we have. And then get started is going to take you directly application. On the right-hand side, we have a direct request for information, so if you're on this page and you want to request information, you can send this. What we're working on is automating the messaging on the backend, automatically get a response to you that same night, like three, like within two minutes later. That's not gonna be quite at launch, but that's coming very soon, and that's part of the marketing efforts and things that we're working on. The program description is from the catalog. For John's program, he's a separately accredited program. For all of our separately accredited programs, they have different requirements on our website. For all those, I've actually put the partner that actually is the accrediting agency, so someone coming in can actually find out exactly what that agency is. The program notices, because these are competitive entry, there are certain application dates, so those have to be taken into consideration, and you'll notice that we have tabbing here. The tabbing is actually so that you don't get stuck with having to scroll through a ton of text when you open a page, and I'll explain that in a minute, but these different programs have different requirements. And then again, just for John's great past, right? Just a kudos out there to PTA and all of our other great health programs that you've heard about. Another thing that we're incorporating on all of the program sites is a link to the division, the administrative contact, and the lead faculty when we have one, so that you can actually get hold of the person in charge of the program and make that connection earlier, rather than going through a whole bunch of other areas. Good so far? Everybody excited? Hey. Okay. The other thing I want to show you is, for current students today, when they go to their student resource pages, this is what I call the Yahoo circa 1996. It's just find the link, right? What we've really tried to do on the new page is to incorporate kind of the tiles, like the current portal that gets you to the different areas that you really need to get to quickly. And then we've actually started breaking in like the class and degree planning areas to kind of guide you there. We've added the academic resource area, so you can get access to Trio, the Veterans Affairs, Taking Care of Business for your ID card, Residential Hall and Parking Services, which everybody loves a parking pass, right? Student finances. So again, this is starting to guide the student into that. Two more things, if you'll bear me with me really quickly, and I apologize for scrolling so quickly. At the bottom of every single page, we have the general stuff, so if you're looking for Board of Trustees information, you can go there. But I want to point you to college policies, because one thing I hate is PDFs. And so Shannon and myself and my administrative assistant Melissa have gone through and painstakingly converted every single NI policy to an HTML format, along with a downloaded PDF, which that means is now that all of our policies, procedures, and the entire website are even more searchable. And so we've used different ways to do that. I'm gonna skip down to, if you'll bear with me just a moment. One of my wonderful IT policies, just because they have a- So the policy and the procedure can be viewed in the same window. Does that make sense? So you can go back and forth really quickly. The other thing about this website is it is entirely responsive, which means that it will change to your device down to your mobile view. And then if you go to the main page, everything still works just wonderfully. Right? Lunchtime on this is coming soon. I'm not committing to a date. Me and the president are going back and forth. If you see me in a ditch, it's because you got mad at me, just kidding. But I'm hoping that we have this out very soon, within three weeks, max is kind of where we're at. This is, it's always been a joke of when, or if the website's coming, it's coming, whether you're ready for it or not. So just happy with the team, happy with everyone else. Lot hours in this, lot of passion, lot of tears, but any questions?
Part of my goal of having him present is that now it's out there, right? So yeah.
I'm committed.
He's committed, but I, this is, I think, you know, it's, there will be some hiccups. Anytime you build a new website, they're very complicated, there are things that link, and there's calendar things that we're trying to get done, and we're trying to streamline some of the enrollment processes to make those smoother. So there's, there's still a lot of work that will be done on the website, but the look and feel should be pretty consistent throughout, and I think it's a much cleaner design than what we were, what we've been dealing with up to this point.
And the old site had close to 9,000 webpages within the site. So you can only imagine how large this process has been. We've been able to-
It's down about forty-five hundred.
Yeah, we're down to about forty-five hundred pages now, so we've really worked to consolidate-
Can't find anything, it was deleted.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's awesome. Great work. Huge undertaking. All right, any remarks for the good of the order? Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.